Do they ever...
You know, you can set, make a, you know, plant a little plant in your windowsill and you've always got fresh rosemary, you've always got thyme and mint and basil and these things. So as long as you have the basics, potatoes, onions, garlic, you can make any form of soup. You know, you just, oh, asparagus is on sale, one head of asparagus or broccoli and you can make a soup. You can do, you know, you could chop it all up and roast it, you know, so...
Well, as we promised earlier, we are going to follow Matt as he goes to the market to shop for ingredients for a three-course lunch. Later in the program, we'll watch him prepare the meal. But first, let's join Matt on a visit to the new Whole Foods store in Venice, where he is perusing the wide array of vegetables and making some choices.
So my two favorite things in the kitchen are onions and garlic. I always want to buy garlic that I can peel and onions that I can peel. When you buy onions and garlic that are already peeled, it means that they've been dipped in a chemical and we don't want to add any other of those ingredients when we're cooking raw. So first, I'll always get my garlic and I like to get yellow Spanish onions. So my favorite way to shop for greens is always to go local. The least amount of time that you take it from the ground, the better off you are. So anytime you don't have a chance to get to a farmer's market, Whole Foods is great. I always like to go with organic spinach. It'll let you know, locally grown, Kenter Canyon Farms, a great farm. We're going to go today for our salad with a baby wild arugula. Arugula has a peppery flavor. We're going to do a simple mushroom saute for our salad, a little Parmesan cheese, keep it very easy, and this one's also very inexpensive. So whenever we go to the grocery store, we want to make sure to handpick all of our produce. So again, our salad today is going to be a wild arugula salad, some portobello mushrooms, which, this is what I'm talking about, packaged mushrooms. You always want to handpick them. When they're packaged, it means they can put it through the glassy frame here and it looks more pretty. We want to handpick them. They're fresher, straight from the farm. So here, our portobello mushrooms today are going to offer us two things. Number one, it's a little bit larger portion, they're also inexpensive. So our portobello mushrooms are for our salad today. So another secret ingredient I like to use is the lemon. The lemon is just as important to me as salt and pepper. We're going to use it to make our vinaigrette for our salad and the zest is going to flavor our chicken dish. When shopping at the market, it's always important to look for specials. Today, tomatoes on the vine are on special. During off-season, you always want to buy tomatoes that are on the vine. The tomatoes still think they're growing and so you're going to get the freshest quality. At the market, we find all different types of greens. Today, we call an Italian black Tuscan cabbage. This is a dollar ninety-nine for one bunch and this is we're going to stretch for our chicken dish today. Very inexpensive, very healthy. Kale is one of the healthiest foods you can eat. So many convenience and grocery stores are going to do you a favor. They're going to package things together with flavors that go together very well. Today, you've got here eggplant, eggplant which happens to be on sale, and bell peppers. You're going to have three different, four different types of bell peppers here, orange, green, yellow, and red. Most inexpensive is always going to be the green, but the sweetest and the most flavorful, especially for pasta, is going to be our yellow bell pepper today. I'm going to take one yellow bell pepper and one eggplant. It's going to cost me about a dollar and a half and we're going to have plenty of leftovers. Looks like we've got everything we need. Let's go cook.
Oh, those were great tips. How fun. Did you completely feel comfortable in the store when you walk into go shopping?
Well, that particular, pardon me, that particular day, we couldn't go to the farmer's market because it was raining. So when we go into the, whenever we go to Whole Foods, it's always just look for what's on special. You know, you never want to spend, you know, you never want to spend more than what you're going to spend if you went to a restaurant. So that's kind of always how we budget it.
Right, and that's a good guideline. That's quite a threshold. You know, Tara, I read someplace that typical meals sometimes come from as far away as fifteen hundred miles that the food, the prepackaged food, has been transported that far. Is it hard to find a local farmer's market? Can people like go online or ask friends?
Yeah, I don't know what the website is, but there, in, here in Los Angeles, there's a farmer's market every day.
Yes.
And even in the outskirts of Los Angeles. And so they're, they're becoming really popular now. So it's, it's, it's pretty accessible and they're, they're so much fun and you develop relationships with the farmers.
And that's what I like because they do take pride in the stuff that they grow. You can, maybe they'll have some preparation hints for you.
Sometimes, and it's just passed through less hands and so it's going to be cheaper, it's going to be fresher and you're going to get the ultimate flavor out of that particular produce that you're choosing.
Not to mention, they're going to give you a couple of things for free if they see you there every week.
Yeah.
Right, that's right.
No joke.
Here comes our regular.
Yeah, exactly. They're going to give you a couple of extra apples. Two extra apples, you're talking about an apple a day, that's two days' worth of apples, you know, you don't have to pay for it.
That's right, that's right. Now, I was fascinated by the four different kinds of peppers that you showed, but again, as you mentioned earlier, they were grouped.
Yeah.
So you could see that maybe these things, you can find a good way to put them together.
And you really don't need to know, and there isn't really any definition of what food has to be. You can be creative at home. I mean, all of these vegetables that come together, you don't have to choose, I want kale and eggplant and onions.
I want to watch you work in the kitchen here. So it's time for a short break. When we come back, we'll continue our discussion of home-cooked meals with our guests, chef Matthew Polley and his catering partner Tara Maxi. Please stay tuned, we'll be back in just a minute.
Ensuring that you, your family, and your home are prepared for a disaster is critical. Be self-reliant and assume responsibility for your own safety and that of your family. For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
Hey buddy, don't you know you should never leave a cooking pan unattended? And a working smoke detector can warn you of a fire. Like the one behind me. My hero.
Next time, listen to the ball. Have a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher that work.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, Cooking for One with Matthew Polley. With us today is Matthew and his catering partner Tara Maxi. Now, I'm getting kind of excited here, hungry too, to watch how you blend all of these things together. But before we get into that, are, is there a way to properly store the leftovers that you first referenced in the first part of the show?
Well, just always remember to keep all your cooked ingredients above your raw ingredients. That's the most important thing. As long as everything's airtight with plastic wrap or, you know, a nice Tupperware set, it's, there's no need to, you know, worry too much in the refrigerator as long as you're putting cool, not like room temperature ingredients in the refrigerator as opposed to hot ingredients.
And Tara, you were mentioning, there are services now that will deliver fresh produce to you, in fact, other foods beyond, and I'm talking beyond meals on wheels. I'm talking about if you're still able to cook for yourself.
Yeah, they deliver, there's all kinds of different companies that do them. And they'll give you a box of whatevers in season, like Matt was saying. And you, so you just sort of have this hot pot and you can make, on our Blogspot, we have different recipes for things that are in season.
Great.
And so I'm sure a lot of it would be in there and, you know, you could make succotash or whatever, I mean, soups.
All right. Now, let's watch, Matthew, as he prepares a three-course lunch for one with the ingredients he shopped for earlier at the Whole Foods market in Venice. And thanks to them for letting us come in and tape. Matt, please describe the process. Now, this is a nice long piece, so you have plenty of time to describe it.
Fantastic.
Okay, great.
All right, so the first thing I'm going to do, always when I go into the kitchen, is set my oven to 500 degrees. Get your oven hot, get your water boiling for the pasta we're going to cook. We're starting to peel all of our mushrooms here for our mushroom, for our mushroom salad. We're going to try to stay away from using any stove top process today just to kind of keep the kitchen clean. So we're going to roast our mushrooms in the oven. So first, we're going to peel them and chop them up into bite-sized pieces. Cooking in the oven, you know, you're not going to get any splattering from olive oil and it just, nobody wants to clean up when they've got hot food ready to eat.
Yes, yes.
So again, we talked about portobello mushrooms being really great because it's a lot, it's a lot larger mushroom for a good inexpensive price. They do have a lot of protein. And so we just chop them up, add them into a bowl. We're going to peel some garlic and chop it up real quick. And also some onions. I talked about having onions and garlic always in the kitchen.
Always there.
You know, if you buy these things in larger portions, you know, you buy a couple onions at one time or a few garlic at one time. When you go to the store to buy something, you only need to buy your main ingredients. Buy a steak or buy some chicken or buy some greens, things like that. You've already got your staples at home. Go ahead and chop up our onions here, bite-sized pieces, and we're going to mix them with our mushrooms and our garlic in the bowl there. Lemon, salt, and pepper are my seasoning ingredients. I use pretty much on everything. So we're just going to go ahead and do some fresh cracked black pepper and cracked sea salt. Try to stay away from using iodized salt. Kosher salt and sea salt is best.
Okay.
I'm just going to mix them all together here in a bowl. A little, maybe two tablespoons of olive oil, one in there total, and I'm just going to throw it in my oven, 500 degrees, and forget about it as I start prepping out for our pasta dish.
Okay, and 500 is just like, that's your temperature, huh?
You don't need to cook, I mean, the only thing you need to cook at 350 degrees is a roast or Tara's desserts. Because other than that, it's, you know, we want to get it cooked now and we don't want to wait all day if we're just cooking for ourselves.
Right.
There's no reason to, you know, to spend the whole day waiting on an oven. So just get it up to 500. Now, our pasta today is going to be a caponata with a whole wheat pasta. We use Roustacella di Abruzzo. It's an, it's an Italian brand, you can find it at Whole Foods. It's the best pasta you can buy in the United States and it's good for you.
Oh, I say that name again?
Roustacella di Abruzzo. Comes in brown bags in the pasta section, right?
All right.
We are saving all of our scraps here to make a vegetable broth so we can make a soup or we can use it for cooking later.
Right.
So you'll see me sort of discarding all the scraps into one big bowl and at the end, we're going to show you how to make a vegetable stock which you can keep in the refrigerator for up to five days.
And it doesn't always have to be winter to have a soup prepared.
No, no, a cold soup is great. I mean, if you want to do a cold tomato soup or asparagus soup. So right now, we're just chopping up the vegetables to make what's called our caponata or a roasted vegetable confit. So we're chopping up some of our heirloom, or I'm sorry, our vine tomatoes, our yellow bell peppers and our eggplant. We're adding them onto a sheet tray there that we've lined with aluminum foil so that way it's easy cleanup at the end. Just tear off the aluminum and trash it.
Very important.
No need to scrub, you know, all of our pans.
Right.
Again, we're going to season with salt and pepper and we're going to drizzle with a little bit of our extra virgin olive oil. For those of you that don't particularly want to use extra virgin olive oil, we use coconut oil as well. It has a higher smoke point and is a little bit better traditional, or nutritional value? A little bit healthier for you.
Okay.
We also added in here some vinegar. Vinegar is going to give it a little bit of tartness.
Right.
And also, it's going to help preserving it. So when it's done cooking, it'll be good for four to five days.
Okay, so now you've prepped that and you've taken out the mushrooms.
Yeah, so now we've taken out our roasted mushrooms here. We're going to scoop them into a bowl and reserve that until we're ready to mix it with our salad. That's our salad right there.
Wow.
Now, we went to Whole Foods and purchased an organic bone-in chicken breast.
Bone-in.
Bone-in. Always get it with a bone-in. You're not going to, it doesn't add any more fat. It takes a little bit longer to cook, but it keeps all of the flavor in the chicken when you cook it. And also here, we have our cavolo nero or kale. Sort of a cool cleaning method. You hold it like a pencil, as I did there, and then just pull it away and you take the stem away. We're going to be roasting that with our chicken. And again, we've got another tomato from our vine we're going to chop up, which of all the juices from the tomato will reduce, giving us a nice pan chicken sauce.
Now, even though this looks like a lot of food, the truth is, there's going to be some nutritional leftovers.
This is going to be a great leftover for you to eat, room temperature, cold, to turn it into a, you're still going to have leftover greens so you can make a nice chicken salad the next day, you know, or you can make it, you can add it all to your vegetable sauce or vegetable stock at the end and make a nice chicken soup.
Oh, like this?
So we're going to really turn this into a lot of different meals. So we're seasoning on both sides our chicken breast and we're going to get a pan heated as hot as we possibly can on the stove.
Right.
Right here, this is our Roustacella di Abruzzo pasta. This is a whole-grain pasta and we're adding it into our salted water.
Salted water.
Salted water, salty like the sea.
Good.
Now, one trick that I always like to use when I'm using, when I'm boiling water is just add about a tablespoon of olive oil here as I'm doing. That'll keep it so the water doesn't boil over.
Ah, great.
Now, I'm making my vegetable stock here. I'm just going to dump all my old vegetable scraps in there, saute it a little bit, add water, bring it to a boil, vegetable stock. When it's done cooking, your food will be done, strain it, you've got vegetable stock.
Excellent.
Now, our pan here is nice and hot. I added maybe a tablespoon of olive oil to the pan, chicken skin side down, and throw it in my 500-degree oven. Now, you see, when you're home, you don't have shoes on, so... Make sure you don't wear shoes in the kitchen, that's a rule. So now I'm adding my water to the chicken, or to the vegetable stock and I'm just going to bring it to a boil. Forget about it. Just stir my pasta a little bit. I've got my pasta caponata working in the oven and my chicken as well working at the same time. So my salad's ready. I'm pulling out my caponata. That took about 10 minutes in the oven. I've got a nice roasted vegetable there and I can set that off to the side as well. Now, what we're going to do next is sort of get our chicken sauce ready to go. We want to have our vegetable and tomato there. So now that I've got a nice sear on the chicken, I'm going to add my greens to the same pan. Remember, we're only messing, we're only dirtying one pan.
Like that, like that.
So we put the, all of our kale in there, the tomato and the onions, mix it a little bit and add our nice seared chicken breast on top. Now, the chicken's not cooked yet. It needs to roast for another 10 to 15 minutes. During that 10 to 15 minutes, our tomatoes and onions and kale will all cook as well.
Gotcha.
Now, we talked about having fresh herbs. Here's some basil. I flip my knife over backwards and I'm, what I'm doing is I'm basically chopping with the opposite of the sharp end to sort of, we want the basil to wilt. You're going to get the most flavor from it. So you're going to very, very, that we're going to add to our caponata. Here's our pasta coming from our pasta cooker. Adding that into a bowl. We're going to mix that with the caponata, some cheese, and put it in a casserole dish. We can put it in the oven and that's going to get nice and crispy on top. And all the flavors from the eggplant are going to cook into the pasta on the bottom.
This is looking really good.
Now, see, this is a large portion. We spent, you know, we spent just under $30 at Whole Foods and this is going to feed us for about three days.
Wow.
So we put our baked pasta back into the oven. We're going to mix our salad now. So we take our Wild Rocket arugula that we got at the grocery store.
Right.
A little fresh lemon juice, salt, pepper, and some shaved Parmesan cheese.
Even with the peppery taste of the arugula still?
You always want to have, you want to layer your seasoning. So you, you don't have to overkill it. Tara likes to joke that I aggressive too season, or I season too aggressively.
Right.
Maybe I've, it's, it's up to everybody's palate. I mean, you pepper it how much you like pepper.
I see.
Or salt it how you like salt. So here's my salad, nice and composed. My Parmesan cheese, arugula, my roasted mushrooms and onions goes on the plate there nice. Now, I'm pulling my pasta from the oven. This is, you know, this you can leave in the same casserole dish when you want to put it in the refrigerator. Just take it out the next day and pop it back in the oven. Just going to plate up some of that here for me nice. Didn't use a lot of cheese, only used olive oil, no butter. We're going to finish it with just some shaved Parmesan on top and a little drizzle of extra virgin olive oil. So you've got a nice little pasta portion here, a nice hearty salad.
Right.
And now we're going to go ahead and plate up our chicken dish.
Which is, it's been in the oven.
Which has been in the oven now for about 15 or 20 minutes as we set everything else up. So typically, this meal should take you about 35 to 40 minutes of cook time and then the next day, you have virtually a third of that time. So we finished the chicken with a little bit of fresh lemon juice on top, some extra virgin olive oil, and plated up our greens and tomatoes on the side there. You've got three dishes, 30 bucks, three days' worth of food, right?
Oh, that's fantastic. And how many meals over that three days? You think, six or nine?
The best thing, yeah, the best, one traditional Italian dish that I've always really liked is to take eggs and pasta. You make sort of a frittata with your leftover pasta. So if you're going to make an omelet, you take your leftover pasta with the caponata, put it in the pan, a little olive oil, crack three or four eggs on top of it and you've got yourself a great lunch or a great late breakfast to start your day off with vegetables, a little pasta, some of your arugula on top, you know, as a garnish. Give a little pepperiness to it, I mean, it's...
And I loved what you said, Matthew, that, yeah, there's a little preparation time here with 35 minutes, but the next day...
The next day, it's easy.
You really just get to throw things together.
Right.
And Tara, you get to, you get to enjoy this food, right?
Yeah, I can see that effect.
Lucky that is. But we don't have very much time left, so I want to make sure people know how to get in contact with you. The website, Matthew?
The website is www. heirloom-la.blogspot.com or you can contact us directly on our phone, 323-872-2904.
And Tara, that's, that's kind of the way they catch you as well.
Yeah, I actually do the website.
Oh, how fun. Hey, good partner.
I can tell you all kinds of terrible things about.
She does the photography, the writing, all the other stuff.
Yeah, but you tell me, there are recipes, in fact, for the recipe that we saw you cook today is on there.
Also, a fish, yeah, with illustrations, a fish, a meat, a chicken.
See, we just, we ran out of time. It's all the time we have for this edition of Aging in L.A. Thank you so much to our guests, chef Matthew Polley and his catering partner Tara Maxi. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks for watching. We'll see you next time.
Lowkey item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services, 311. Your one call to City Hall.
L.A. City View Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
It's 10:17, we're still waiting for the arrival of Mr. Rosendahl. He will make up our quorum. Now, Mr. Alakon is scheduled to leave at noon. We're waiting for his arrival also, Mr. Rosendahl. Other members are excused today. We're arriving at 11:00, so we are in a whole pattern. Now 10:17. We're gonna go live, do a presentation. Mr. LaBange, a flag salute by you today. We'll have you do the flag salute in a moment. We're gonna go live in a moment. We do have a... No, we're gonna go live in just a moment. Just a moment. Just, we're going live right now. Good morning, and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall. This is the meeting of the City of Los Angeles. We're at the City Council Chambers. It's Tuesday, July 6th. We meet three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. All meetings are open to the public. For those who can't make it to City Hall, or our satellite offices in Van Nuys and San Pedro, you can view us on the cable, www.lacity.org, or Channel 35. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Well, we are short of a quorum, so we're not gonna call the roll at this moment till we get our quorum, but we're going to start with Mr. Smith with the presentation. Mr. Rosendahl is here. Okay, we now have our quorum. Meeting is now in session. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Coretts, Cory, and LaBange, Parks, Perry, Rice, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zain, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
First item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks, second by Mr. Wesson.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han, second by Mr. Coretts.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and it is time for the flag salute.
Mr. LaBange, please lead us in the flag salute. Everyone, please stand in the chambers. Please stand.
May I have you stand in, on the sixth day of July 2010. Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. LaBange. Mr. Smith, you have a presentation?
Introduction.
Introduction, I'm sorry. Introduction. Introduction by Councilmember Smith.
I just got this.
Okay.
Why don't you go through the agenda?
All right, we'll give Mr. Smith a moment to go through the notes on that particular introduction. Mr. Clerk, our next item of business, please.
First items on the agenda, items 1 through 19, are items for which public hearings have been held. There is no action required on item 2.
All right, colleagues, 1 through 19. Do we have any cards?
Public hearing has been held in this section. Mr. President, items 3 through 8 are ordinances, and there will be 12 members today. Do you wish to hold those?
Let's hold those for the 12 members. Any specials? 11, Mr. Cardenas, number 11, special. This is 1 through 19, colleagues. Any other specials? 1 through 19. Seeing none. On those, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next items, please.
Items 20 through 27 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a request on item 24 to continue that one day to July 7th.
Without opposition, we will continue 24. We are now 22, 27. Ms. Han?
I think we should call 20 special.
Number 20, special for Ms. Han. Mr. Coretts, did you have 20 also? Okay. Anyone else? Any cards?
Mr. President, there are cards on 21, 23, 25, and 27.
We'll call those special, 21, 23, 25, 27, for the cards.
Which does leave council now items 22 and 26.
22, 26, seeing no other specials, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Mixed items, please.
That does take care of the items called special. Do you wish to go to the special introduction?
Mr. Smith.
But if I could have 12 go fourth with?
Pardon me?
12 go fourth with?
Fourth with, on 12.
And the presentation's a couple more minutes.
Couple more minutes for Mr. Smith. Okay. Very well. Let's do, Mr. Clerk, how about a public comment?
Public comment?
We'll do a public comment now. Lee Glaze, our first speaker.
Good morning. Oops. Okay, Billy. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council. My name is Lee Glaze, and I can't tell him, legally blind. Is Councilman Garcetti up there?
No, he's not. It's Councilman Zain chairing the meeting today. Mr. Garcetti will be arriving...
I'm sorry?
Mr. Garcetti will be arriving approximately 11 o'clock.
Okay, very good. At any rate, I have an issue. I live at Trangle Square, which is a gay and lesbian elder housing. The Councilman Garcetti was extremely helpful in maintaining the property for and assisting the building going. And it's supposed to be an affordable housing unit. An affordable housing unit, if you punch up on Google or Yahoo, it says 30% of your gross income. Now, there are several tenants that are paying 45, 50, and 60% of their gross income, and that's not acceptable. I called Garcetti's, Councilman Garcetti's Hollywood and Western office, talked to Caesar, and he suggested I call my state senator and my state assemblyman, which I did. They both reverted me back to Councilman Garcetti's office. And I thought, excuse me, but the city with budgetary problems, why is it that my councilperson is doing state business? Now, is this common? I just don't understand this. So I'd like an answer from Councilman Garcetti, and perhaps Councilman Rosendahl, whom I know quite well, and might assist me with this, because it just simply is not acceptable. 30% is 30%, not 40%, not 50%, not 60%, 30%. Period. So that's what I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll have a representative from Councilman Garcetti's office speak with you.
I certainly hope so.
We will have that done momentarily. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Dr. Williams, Dr. Clyde Williams.
It'll take three days for this thing to warm up.
Good morning. Happy 4th of July, past. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, Elsreno, Northeast L.A. Southwest Museum. Oh, whatever happened to that? Well, we were told on Friday that there's an amendment to the original land lease agreement. Well, two years ago, we did a PRA, but maybe the PRA didn't reflect that amendment. Well, we're going to do another PRA for the commission, for the department, and for maybe some individual commissioners. We don't know, because that's one of the things. If it's not written down, if it's not a written amendment which modifies the land lease agreement that the Autry National Center has for 11 acres of Griffith Park, it's null and void. It's not appropriate. So we will be looking for it. We'll also be looking for how it was prepared, who prepared it, who approved it. So was it ever brought to council? I don't remember. So it is actually, might say, referred to in the withdrawn EIR. That is, there's a phrase in there that says, "The city will forgive all past deficiencies for the land lease agreement in Griffith Park." So, oh, Autry's planning a change of the galleries. The land lease agreement requires that any changes in the structure must be approved by the board and the Department of Wrexham Park. That is, if they comply with their land lease agreement. If they don't comply with their land lease agreement, then maybe you should declare it in default. 11 acres of land, plus a very large structure. Thank you.
Thank you. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Free plug for you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. You know, I have a reputation as the Cassandra of Los Angeles. I warned you about what would happen after the Lakers won. L.A. Times said there was no problem, there would be... Of course, the L.A. Times, if you read the paper, claimed that the entire Universal was destroyed in this prank that it pulled on you. Okay, let me tell you what's happening now. It happened, LAPD got caught with its pants down, and it will be caught again. Go over right now to where the Messely trial is. Black berets are forming there. Or is it my psychotic ravings? It may be psychotic ravings now, but it'll be conventional wisdom. I'm telling you right now, you have some really smooth operators from Oakland. Oakland is locked down. There'll be no riots in Oakland, because the police are on top of it. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I think Messely should get the electric chair. I think he should be in the gas chamber. But that's not what's gonna happen. That's not gonna happen, and there will be rioting. And the rioting will... The whole place will be surrounded when Messely walks out of the building. There will be hundreds of people. There will be hundreds of people. They're forming now, all over America, coming here. The longer it takes for the verdict, the more people will be here, and you sit there doing nothing, and the mayor, as we all know, does absolutely nothing. He spends his time dating Channel Five. This is what's happening now. HollywoodHighlands.org, go over and watch. Every radical is showing up here, and the flashpoint may not even be downtown. It can be anywhere in the city where they decide that they're going to take a stand. And what are you people doing? You show up twenty minutes late. You don't have a clue, because you don't walk the streets the way I have. Watch what happens when the verdict comes out. I will be proven correct.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs, our next speaker.
Good morning, City Council. Thank you. Arnold Sachs. One of the best things you actually do here, to the disadvantage of the public, is you have items on your agenda. When people put cards in, you have them speak before you discuss the agenda items, which really is a detriment, because we don't get to a pine about what you say regarding those agenda items. Take on Friday, for instance. There was a couple of items. One, we had the CEO, I believe it was Ray Siriana, and he was discussing some clarification on the budget. I asked some questions regarding the budget year versus the fiscal year and the layoffs that were taken, and how they, what do they actually affect? Do they affect the fiscal year budget, or the budget year budget, or the Rosh Hashanah budget, or the Noah's budget, or the Ted Offensive, the New Year's Ted budget? Which budget are we talking about? And he was discussing some things, and Mr. Parks asked him to clarify some things, and he started talking about the money that would be borrowed, the bonds that would be borrowed, the bonds that would be issued short term to pay for the deficit to help the city run. And he mentioned that they do it every year, a billion dollars this year. Every year, the city borrowers bought money for these budgets, bonds. But two weeks ago, you had a discussion regarding the same bonds. You didn't know anything about them, that the banks that were being considered were suing the city. In other words, they were going to be paid while they were in a party to a lawsuit against the city. So they were going to benefit while the city was going to pay one way or the other, and you didn't know anything about it. Yet he mentioned, you do it every year. This sounds like the water.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs, Chris Petrow.
Good morning, esteemed members of the City Council. Good morning, other people. Today, I'd like to share a little story with everyone, and I hope you'll find it very entertaining, and I hope you'll all pay close attention, because it could potentially be a vision for the future of our country. And please understand before we get started, no one here today is going to learn anything from my little history lesson, absolutely no one, trust me. So thousands and thousands of years ago, there existed the great people of Atlantis. The Atlanteans were an advanced civilization. They had knowledge, they had technology, they had power, they had wealth, they had it all. And they turned into a war mongering nation who preyed upon their own. What do you think happened? They self-destructed. They threw it all away. They blew it. You see, they mistook intelligence for arrogance. They only thought they had it all because it was an illusion of their own creation, just like the illusion exists today, that people here have civil rights. Based on what's been going on in my life, it's nothing more than an illusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to the Valley, Donna Peirman, in Van Nuys, City Hall. Donna Peirman.
Hello. Yeah, Mary couldn't be here. Anyway, we, first of all, we don't need parcel taxes for libraries, because parcel tax makes property tax go up, which raises rents, people. Anyway, we need to stop saying that city employees are the reason the city isn't a whole, but no one mentions the DWP, who keeps on getting their raises when others forego them, and no forloes for the DWP. Our city council will get their raise this year, so why can't others get it? Why aren't people getting mad about that? Their raises are a lot larger, much larger. The others are getting a small raise, but the city council is getting in the thousands along with our mayor. Can you put down city employees when the city council gives billions to the CRA and all the money else is spent on the thirty-ten rail? Anyway, the CRA is the number one problem with our debt. You need to stop the CRA, you pretty much stop the debt. How about those mayor's huge staff and city council? Three people just to do this, our mayor's schedule. And those people also in the protocol and rules and regulations, but he doesn't seem to be going by his own rules and regulations. By the way, his own staff was told, wasn't told that he was acting as mayor at those events, at least fifty thousand some free tickets. The mayor said in two thousand and five, he was going to clean that up, make sure that they didn't get free gifts like that, but I guess he forgot to say not for himself. In the meantime, we're having deep troubles, the oil spill, we're in deep trouble with that oil spill, our leftist communist president not taking care of terrorists and sleeper cells. We are in deep trouble. Our safety in the country is not as important to our President Obama as money and power. He gets more, he'd rather work more with terrorist countries than worry about our safety. Los Angeles can be blown up, and our salaries and pension, and our, yeah, and people are mad at the city employee salaries and pensions. Safety first, or life depends on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have four representatives from PAVA. If you'll please come forward, Angela Ho, Ryan Jun, Hyeun Chong, and Jane Kim. If you'll please come forward, you'll each have two minutes to speak, each of you will have two minutes, so in the order which you wish to proceed. Thank you, go ahead.
Good morning, LA City Council. As a group of students who strongly seek to create a better, safer environment, we are fortunate enough to participate in the PAVA and Hail the Bay Stream Team project. This project basically sought to reach young students who are interested in benefiting the health of our coastal areas and volunteering for the Pacific American Volunteer Association, also known as PAVA. PAVA collects young students to participate in citywide cleanups and other volunteer events to clean up the Los Angeles community. And by holding these public events, PAVA speaks out to the Southern California District by making sure that awareness of pollution and environmental hazards starts at an early age. From there, we can help work towards a more ideal society and provide these opportunities for anyone and everyone who cares for their city. Unfortunately enough, the Los Angeles community has a great number of organizations that are passionately striving for the same goal. PAVA works along with Hail the Bay, a nonprofit organization that focuses on raising water pollution awareness in the California coastal areas. Stream Team is a specialized division of Hail the Bay that sought to gather the scientific information, not to just acknowledge the harmful effects on our surroundings. The main purpose of our investigation was to directly see the destruction of our aquatic ecosystems and then discover new ways of saving them. By visiting the Malibu Creek and the Compton Creek, we were able to see the drastic effects of our, of the pollution on our ocean drains and analyze the scientific data regarding the water quality of both of those ecosystems.
The hand of human pollution extends far, even to locations classified as nature sanctuaries. Near Calabasas, sunny Malibu Creek seems untouched by human civilization. Unfortunately, our own contamination has caused some of the plants and trees to die. This destruction has exposed the creek to sunlight, stimulating the growth of algae. These large numbers of algae harmed the water and killed the fish and marine life. In spite of this, the creek water was clear and flowed steadily. There are also thirty to fifty meters of trees and nutrients on each side of the creek. These two areas constitute the Riperian Buffer Zone, an area that prevents pollutants and garbage from entering Malibu Creek. However, although the Riperian Buffer Zone was large, great amounts of trash surrounded the entire creek. Not surprisingly, the water quality of Compton Creek was much worse than that of Malibu Creek. The color of the water was brown, and there were enormous amounts of garbage lining the sides of the creek. All of the creek's pollution come from the surroundings. Being located next to seven-ten highway, Compton Creek is vulnerable to urban runoff to find a stormwater containing pollutants from our city. In addition, since the creek borders the metro subway station, greater numbers of people are present around Compton Creek. These increased numbers of people contribute to more litter and harmful chemicals in the creek's vicinity. Unfortunately, Compton Creek is directly connected to the Los Angeles River, and all the trash from Compton Creek flows directly into the Los Angeles River. Furthermore, the cement and lack of plants make Compton Creek more exposed to pollution than Malibu Creek.
It was very surprising that even the clear and beautiful looking Malibu Creeks were contaminated by unwanted dissolved nutrients and fertilizer. Thank you. Yet nobody seems to be concerned or distressed by this matter. Many of us had the same mentality before participating in this project. We were indifferent in that of issues concerning our waters. However, after working on this project, we were able to directly see the problem of pollution in our creeks. More importantly, we were able to judge the extent of the damage we have caused on our own home. Indeed, it'll take a lot of effort to prevent water pollution, but we can start with small steps to maintain a healthy world by changing our daily habits. For example, if everyone used recyclable grocery bags, we would be able to prevent the wide usage of plastic bags and bottles that take hundreds of years to disintegrate and decompose. These small changes in our daily habits will bring about rewards of a healthier, more enjoyable environment. The more we raise concern about ocean pollution in our own cities, we can create a more conducive effort to the restoration of our homeland. PAVA is a fairly large organization, and we've succeeded to reaching out to small parts of California, but compared to the number of people that actually live in California, this is not enough. In addition, in addition to hosting cleanup operations, we aim to further our understanding of the environment by conducting scientific research. So far, we have helped to fix the damages inflicted, but have not been able to prevent the environmental damages in the first place. Conducting this kind of research will give us a better chance of winning the war against pollution and ultimately preventing it from ever happening again. This seems to be quite a reach, but with effort and support, it can be possible. As Representatives of PAVA, we humbly ask for the support and friendship of the LA City Council. As we strive to better our home planet, we'd like to ask the council to join us in the struggle against the environmental damages and to welcome us with open hearts when PAVA is in need of help. Also, although they might not be present today, we'd like to thank Councilmember Jan Perry for attending our PAVA dinner banquet, and Councilmember President Garcetti, although we missed you, Mitch was amazing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank the Representatives of PAVA for being here. Eight years ago, when we started on the river cleanup, PAVA was one of the strongest supporters, and you brought many, many individuals, hundreds in certain occasions, to help with the cleanup. But I think more importantly, the message you're getting today is about our perspective on our environment and the fact that young folks like yourself, and I'm hoping the young ones that are here in the audience today, those in attendance, understand that there have been many engineering solutions to many of our problems. Today, engineering is just as important, but it's how we embrace the natural elements along the river corridor. So you're right, if we can break out the cement, we can create many jobs just in that process, but just as many more jobs reestablishing natural habitats while maintaining asset control. And you're absolutely correct. If we can essentially address the urban slaver that is contaminating our waterways and our ocean, future generations can hopefully swim in the ocean without worry of contamination, and our natural habitats in our watershed, starting with the river as the spine, could generate the kind of healthiness that we need in the future. As our population continues to grow, the big question is, where will the water come from? And what are we doing in respective disciplines to address those needs? So thank you for your presence, your spirit, more importantly, your optimism and change, and I appreciate your presence too. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti.
Councilmember Reyes, you took the words right out of my mouth, and for the PAVA students who have been alongside Mr. Reyes and Mr. Labange and myself and so many folks, you really, I think, are evidence that anybody who's cynical about the future of our city just has to hear the voices that you have, and you literally bring out sometimes thousands of people to these cleanups. I'm sorry I missed it this year. I've missed only two years when I've been away at military service, but I was there in spirit, and I know my staff was there. And what you've done in Hollywood, what you've done in Griffith Park, what you've done in Koreatown, what you've done along the LA River, what you've done on the coast, what you've done in Compton, and you've also brought together very diverse communities. And I'm always so impressed with the young people who come here to public comment, patiently wait, and speak their two minutes so articulately, but congratulations. Continue to give back and continue to inspire people, especially your peers, to do that here. You have seen the beginning of the rebirth of our waterways, and I think you'll be able to be that generation that enjoys them, that sees a swimmable and a fishable and even drinkable water system in our lakes and our rivers and our oceans. So thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for leading the charge here on council, doing that as well. Congratulations.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. Reyes and Mr. Garcetti, I won't repeat what they said, but I want to say PAVA's number one. There's no other organization that does what you do, whether it's on the Los Angeles River, or restoration of Griffith Park after the fire, and all your work. You've got great leadership sitting at this council chambers today, a great leadership that helped you get here. PAVA is one of the best of all organizations, and I stand to say that. Congratulations. Thank you for your words.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk, we now have thirteen members who want to do the ordinances.
And the ordinances are items three through eight.
On those matters, any specials? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well. Mr. Smith, your presentation, your introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. A very great pleasure for me to introduce to you someone I've known for a long time, who served once as an intern in my office when I was chief staffer at Hal Berenson, is here today to introduce another great intern program that we have with our Board of Public Works, none other than the daughter of Councilmember and Commissioner of Department of Public Works, Andrea Alakan. Andrea, if you'd come forward, please. She isn't back. She's going to introduce a very special program that's been run out of our Public Works Department.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, members, Council President Garcetti, Andrea Alakan, Commissioner and Vice President of the Board of Public Works. It's my pleasure to be before you today to present to you sixty-three high school students from your districts who were selected to participate in this year's Public Works High School Internship Program. So if I could ask them to please stand. In a nutshell, what the Board of Public Works does is place high school students in six weeks, full-time, paid, summer internship positions in fields of engineering, construction management, environmental sciences. It's estimated that this year alone, there is a shortage of seventy thousand engineers nationwide, and so this program is intended to close that gap. This program could not be at all possible without the support of our private sponsors who are represented here behind me today. We've got several of them. I'm going to run through some of them. AECOM, Atholike Consulting Engineering Services, Bergen Associates, Black and Beach, Brown and Caldwell, Corolo Engineers, CDM, CH2M Hill, Dean Ryan Consultants, Exposition Construction Authority, Fugro West, HDR, ICF International, Leighton Construction Incorporated, Malcolm Purney, Mars Services, Mott and Buntich Construction Company, MWH Americas, Parsons, RBF Consulting, Tetra Tech, URS Corporation, and a special thanks to Qualion, who has sponsored our luncheon this afternoon. We've got two representatives of our program partners. MWH, who sponsored ten internships this year, and just, they actually financially support each of these interns. The Board of Public Works facilitates the application and selection process, but these corporations actually pay for these students to be employed throughout the course of the summer. So first, if I could introduce Mr. Joseph Woeslaw, Vice President of MWH.
Honorable Council, honorable Council, it's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Joe Woeslaw with MWH. My name is Joe Wieslaw with MWH. In 2003, we partnered with the Board of Public Works to create the Public Works Intern Program. And at that time, we had two sponsors and a total of ten interns. At this point, the program has grown. We have over thirty sponsors. Since 2003, we've had over three hundred and forty interns run through the program. And this year, we have sixty-three interns altogether. So it's a wonderful program, and we're very pleased to be a part of it. Thank you very much.
Next, another one of our longstanding program partners, Ms. Rabina Chowdhury from
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Mars has been a partner in the Public Works High School Internship Program since 2004. About two years ago, we got Caltrans and LAX involved in the program as well. And another component of the program is outreach to high school students during Engineers Week, which is usually the third week of February. And this year, engineers from Public Works, from LAVA, from consulting firms, and from Caltrans went to more than eighty high school classrooms and just talked to the students and asked them to consider engineering as a possible career. And Mars is truly a proud member of the Public Works High School Internship Program. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, I want to bring in a second-time student who's participating in the program. But before I do that, I just want to mention, members, there's a green sheet on your desk that lists the students from your district with the brief summary of their accomplishments. And so I'm sure you'll see that these are phenomenally talented students. And if you have the opportunity, we'd love for you to come by and say hello. They will be here all day. But next, if I could introduce Melanie Turnipseed from Harbor Prep. She's representing Council District Fifteen.
Good morning, City Council, I'm sorry. As they mentioned, I was a participant in the internship last year, and I actually worked for MWH, an engineering company. And what I would like to say about them and this whole internship experience as a whole is that they gave me a lot of experience, not only in the engineering field, but as well as architect, and a lot of other broad fields that I would like to probably get into. And it gave me a lot of experience, and I've also met a lot of nice people in my office. And so I'm back this year, and hopefully I can get a lot more new people and get a lot more experience in the engineering field. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of our interns, and thank you to our participating companies and all the great staff at the Board of Public Works. Mr. Labange, do you want to say something?
The interns, too. It's so special, interns, before you leave, folks.
And Mr. Labange, I should point out, Justin Ray Vierante is from Marshall High School.
All right, good to see the John Marshall High, great architectural building there. Good student. But also, if you get a chance, Commissioner Alakan, if you can make sure they go to the first floor of DWP, they have a great display of all the engineering that Mahalan did, that brought the water to Los Angeles and others, and I know over the MWD. But it's great that you take this time. Think how many of your friends are still in bed or watching something else? You're engaged, you have to be congratulated. Big hand for these interns.
Thank you very much. We'll next go to the remaining items called special. Item number eleven is the first one.
That was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Yeah, Mr. Cardenas, item number eleven is before us.
I'm not sure that the mayor's people are here right now. Could we put it over for a little bit?
Sure. Hold it on the desk. Absolutely. Next, we'll go to item twenty. This is the water use item, and we do have cards on the public, so let's start with those. Donna Perriman and Van Nuys is our first speaker. Good morning again, Ms. Perriman.
Mr. Garcetti, is this on number twenty?
Yes, it is, ma'am.
Okay. Anyway, the water problem is caused by the city council. We have the, also the council and the mayor and the managers make a lot more than the city employees, and they should be mad at those people for the water prices. Anyway, I believe this will be very confusing to have odd houses have one day and even houses have another day. Right now, it's even difficult to make sure that all the people know exactly when we should be able to water the lawns. I don't know if we'll be on the DWP bill, but people are already confused enough as it is about when exactly will they'll be able to water. And this seems to me like a way for the city to get money to try to find people who are confused about what day they're able to water so that they can get them a fine. And it seems like some of the people are able to water a lot, and some people have very lush, green garden lawns, and especially people like Councilman Smith. And I don't think it's right, and some people are restricted down to a very little, small amount of money. So it seems to me like that how many people get to water is who they are. Anyway, I don't like this idea about the even and odd items, because this is very confusing, and I don't really believe that this will help the situation at all. And all it is going to do is make it very confusing, and people are wondering if they're the house that's supposed to be on Wednesday, or if they're the house that's supposed to be on Thursday. And I think we should just go back and let people water by a small amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning again.
Good morning. Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. I'm not sure, to even, that doesn't really sound that confusing to me, but what I'm glad to see is that the city is actually taking action to amend Chapter Twelve, Article One of the LAMC, to clarify prohibited uses and modify certain water conservation requirements of the Water Conservation Plan. Since you're taking action on the charter here, why not take some action on the hiring charter? Recently, you had the fiasco with these Department of Water and Power workers caught on the clock, not in a strip joint, drinking and driving and doing all the other kinds of things, and there was hearings to decide if and when they would be terminated. We don't even know if they were terminated. Why don't you amend that part of the LAMC and have a clause that says, if you're stupid enough to be caught on camera drinking and driving and coming out of a strip club when you should be working, you should be terminated immediately? No need to hear of hearings?
You can bring it back to the water angels.
I am. Well, I'm talking about you're amending Chapter Twelve of the LAMC. And I'm saying, since you're taking that kind of action, amend the charter, amend the chapter. There's got to be a chapter on the hiring and firing clauses of DWP. Amend that, take care of your business, don't leave it for... We still don't know if those employees are still working or not. Thank you.
Dr. Clyde Williams, our next speaker. After that is John Walsh.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four one one five Barrett Road, Elsarena, Northeast L.A. Why are we even talking about this? Wasn't there a issue several years ago where the DWP was given a rate increase to improve their piping, the pipe system? Oh, they're replacing it roughly on a three-hundred-year replacement cycle, that is, less than one percent per year. So why not enforce that part also? Why not go to a best management practice of one percent per year? That's only a few hundred miles of pipe, rather than worrying about having the conservation measures being modified, and you can't enforce it anyway, even here in City Hall. Which side of the street are you on? Because that will influence it. There's also a matter that the enforcement hasn't even applied to general services, and if you come in on it Monday and Thursday, or whatever it was, you will find that the water overflows into the street. But there was never an enforcement, so I don't know how you're going to enforce this. But the root cause is the fact that the pipes are old, and the pipes are bursting because of unusual, no, not unusual pressure differences. These should be within the spec of the pipe to withstand in any event. So you can do the different sides of the street, it's done in some places, but it won't work. It's largely unenforceable. So go back to the practicality of getting more pipe replaced and suffering the burst until that is completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. John Walsh is next.
John Walsh, logging at Hollywood Highlands, L-A-N-D-S dot org. Email me at HollywoodDems, the E-M-S, at gmail dot com. Mr. Eric Garcetti was forty minutes late. He'll tell you he was on time. Spirit, he was here in spirit. I might point out that this entire august building, there is not one public clock. Maybe that's why you're always late. How about a clock?
Mr. Garcetti, he's not talking about item twenty. And I was excused to arrive at eleven AM this morning, Mr. Walsh. If you can bring it back to the pipes, that's what we're talking about, but thank you.
Heckle, heckle, heckle. People can get up here and talk about Atlantis, and that's unsubject. I talk about tardiness, that's off-subject.
You can talk about it, but general public comment is the appropriate moment, just like Atlantis would be the appropriate time to talk about that.
Odd and even. Quiet. If you're not going to pay attention, just be quiet. It's an excellent idea. We found out through the scientific study six months ago that the problem was that there was too much pressure at any one time. The odd and even solution could have been put in place three, four, five months ago. It is not your priority here. Now remember, anytime they disagree with me, they can stop me. And that's why I say we're going to have a riot. Two weeks, two, is this today or the next few days?
Please bring it back to the pipes.
The riot is out of order, but you have this nauseating self-congratulation of people coming up here. HollywoodHighlands dot org, for shame.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. And it was not out of order in general public comment. In fact, we enjoyed hearing those comments earlier. For the record, I was excused, as was announced at eleven AM. I arrived thirty-five minutes early, ten twenty-five. And if you look behind you, there is a public clock available for you right there. All right, with that, let's go ahead and close the public comment. Ms. Perriman, did you want to start as the committee chair on this item? Sorry?
I'm sorry, your question?
On the watering? You have the first chance by protocol as committee chair. If not, you can pass it to the...
I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Yes, we took this through committee, and it's a result of research done by the dean of the school, the Viterbi School of Engineering at University of Southern California. He came up with this very direct, very, I'd say, simple proposal to be able to correct the situation that occurred last summer. Comes to mind the intersection of Coldwater Canyon and Ventura. And I would recommend that we adopt this plan and give it a try. We'll know very quickly whether it's effective or not.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn is next. After that is Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have anybody here from the department? Because I have a lot of questions. I understand an expert came up with this idea that watering two days a week was the cause of our water main break, which, you know, I'm not sure we know for sure whether that's the reason. And in fact, if we actually believed that that was the reason, we should have stopped this two-day-a-week watering immediately when we figured it out. I know we, those of us asked many times, did we think that that was the problem for the water main break? And we kept hearing back from the department that they didn't think that was the problem. So now we have some expert report that said that was the problem. But again, it's July, and I'd like to know when was the last water main break, because we're still on two days a week. So if that really were true, we should be having a lot of water main breaks, if that's true. My problem, colleagues, is, you know, I think we ought to allow people to water the Greg Smith ordinance, which is water three times a week for a shorter amount of time, allow people to do it themselves. What we're trying to do is get people to conserve fifteen percent, let people go to their own bills, figure it out, and water three days a week, a shorter period of time. I don't think we're enforcing currently the two-day-a-week. If we were, then I think they would have been out to Greg Smith's house after he went on camera, pretty much telling everybody that he was a scofflaw and not following our ordinance. And I don't know if they went out to his house and busted him, I doubt it. So clearly, if we've got people going on TV saying they're not following the ordinance, how are we going to enforce this ordinance among other residents of Los Angeles? I think it's a bad idea to change odd, even. I think we ought to keep it the way it is, or allow people to water three days a week with their own. And I also think, my personal opinion is, I think we should get rid of the before-nine and not until four o'clock, because then, again, you're shortening the time when everybody's watering. We've had the kind of weather in Southern California, it's July sixth, and it's raining in San Pedro this morning. If, you know, I want to water after ten, then that ought to be my prerogative, as long as I'm keeping the amount of water to the number of gallons that I'm trying to reduce. So I'm not in favor of pushing this on the rest of Angelenos. Again, when we have one councilmember who's refusing to comply currently, I don't think we ought to force other residents to a new standard of water rationing. I'm not convinced that this is the problem. And again, if we do think it's the problem, then why don't we allow people to water three days a week for ten minutes apiece, Greg Smith ordinance, or allow people to water a little after ten, or a little before four? I'm not in favor of this, and I'll probably vote no on it. Thank you.
From the defiant councilmember Greg Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. That was a great question, by the way, I think. Can I have the staff come forward from DWP? I have a question for you, unlike my predecessor. Actually, there's a question here. First of all, we did a voluntary program two years ago, where we didn't have the mandatory. We said to the people of L.A., we need you to conserve. What was the result of that?
At that time, the mayor had asked for a voluntary ten percent conservation. I think we were running around seven percent on a voluntary, on a basis.
What was the reduction of water usage over that timeframe?
It was approximately seven percent from the year, the base year before, which was the year we chose to measure from.
So we asked people of L.A. to cut back, they did?
They did, but not as much as what the goal was.
Not as much as you want. So now you come in with a scheme, you know, I've never done this in seven years here, but I got to do this for the first time. I told you so. We sat in committee a year ago, we talked about the water mains breaking in this city, and I said to you, could that be caused by cavitation, caused by too much water going through the system? And you said, no, that's not what's doing it. Now two universities come forward and said, that's actually what did happen. We're putting too much water through a system in a very short timeframe, and our system is not in good shape, needs to be replaced, and it's causing too much pressure in a system that really can't handle it. So exactly what I said to you a year ago was the problem. And I say to you again today, I think we need to trust our people more. We don't need to tell them in this very complicated scheme of four different levels of what days you can water, odd, even, different days, confuse the people to heck, and then we can change it to Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four. Nobody's going to know what to do, folks. Your billing system is antiquated, you can't tell them in your billing system what they need to do. We can't put inserts in there that really anybody reads. Nobody reads those inserts. I'm sorry, we spent a lot of money, I know. People don't read those. We published an ordinance, and it's posted down here in the elevator of City Hall and expect people to know what to do. They can't follow this scheme. It is too complicated for even people that know what to do and really follow it. We need to have a system that just said, we want you to conserve... We need to have a system that just says, we want you to conserve. Here's what we want you to accomplish. Figure it out. But here's what we recommend. Three days a week, eight minutes a day, rather eight minutes, rather than your proposal, which is two times, which is 15 minutes. Your proposal is 38, or 30 units. My proposal would be 24 units. And you'd allow people to have usage on their lawns three days a week instead of two days a week. Their lawns will stay green to a degree. Their plants will survive and will have a greener, better city. Rather than forcing something that is so complicated, nobody will know what to do. Everybody would be in violation because it will change from time to time. Let's just say, you pick the three days, we don't care, and you water at whatever time you want. We suggest in the morning and evenings because we don't want you to evaporate it. But let the people do their job. We can trust citizens of L.A. They're not dumb. They're pretty smart. But when we put together a scheme like this, nobody can figure it out. So I really think, members of the council, yeah, I understand what the department's trying to do. I support what the department's trying to do. You know, I may be a scofflaw, Ms. Hahn, but I have a water capture system in my house. We capture 360 gallons of water on my property in Cisterns. I doubt if anybody sitting around here does that. So I'm committed to this program. But it's time, time, and time that we need to trust the people of L.A. to do something. And let's just give them a simplistic option. And that is, pick three days a week you want to water, water for eight minutes, cut your water usage down. We will all be better off, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. While you're defiant, you're very logical. Mr. Garcetti.
So Greg, if we get Cisterns, we can break the law? Is that the new? No, I'm just kidding. I actually agree with Mr. Smith here. And while Ms. Hahn has called the Greg Smith Plan, my wife, who is a big gardener for the last year and a half, has been talking about, you know, that there was a flawed premise in the greenhouse effect that this actually had that offset what we're, I think, conserving in water, which is, we know that plants die with only two waterings a week. And so, Mr. Smith, I fully embrace and was going to stand up and talk about that, and thank you for that. Sometimes it does take an act of defiance to actually point out what's wrong out there. If more Republicans would just do that, I think we'd have a better world. But thank you for leading the way. I know this is also premised, yeah, I know you also premise this on data from a USC study, Mr. Smith, and I just want to make sure there's no conflict of interest with your love of USC, that it was not flawed. But I actually read the entire report, and I think there's two things here today, folks. It's both the pipes and the plants. If we have plants and lawns that are dying, we certainly offset the cooling island effect that we want to have throughout this city of green areas, green yards, green plants. And I think we can, as Mr. Smith said, certainly something that we looked at in our house as well, do smaller bursts over a longer period of time and be able to sustain that. I do think that the department's right, though, that we do need to have some levels when we have really crisis moments. And I think the department does a very good job with its water. What we're looking at with the pipes, and I think this was pointed out in the opening comments, Ms. Hahn talked about it, or whoever it was, maybe it was one of the public comment folks, could you let the public know what is the kind of timeline for replacing our pipe infrastructure? And then I have one more question on pipes as well.
Okay. My name is Jim McDaniel. I'm the senior assistant general manager in charge of the water system at D W P. Currently, we have set goals for pipeline replacement in response to the rate increases that were granted to the department in part on the justification for improving our infrastructure. Since '06, '07, we went from a goal of 50,000 feet per year to over-doubling that. This last year, we did 110,000 feet per year. With the current staffing levels that we have, we'll be able to increase that because we're on a, we're training some new people that we've hired this year. We'll be able to get that up to 130,000 feet next year, and it'll probably cap out at the current hiring level at about 155,000 feet per year.
And that's quicker rate than what's degrading?
And, well, the, not really, to be honest with you.
So is it degrading at a higher rate?
The rule of thumb for this type of infrastructure is some, probably someplace between 100 and 150-year life, lifetime. The rate at which we are replacing the pipe right now, at 130,000 feet per year, translates into about a 290-year life cycle. So you've got a...
As was pointed out by one of our...
Yeah, you've got 120, 125 years.
So it's like our sidewalks here, as quickly as we're replacing, there's more that's falling apart more quickly than replacing those?
Probably more so. We probably need to accelerate the amount of replacement.
And I think that, you know, just as we looked at Proposition O, which not many people thought would pass, which was something about the water quality, I think we need to integrate our water operations more fully and maybe even look at that down the line as something the department needs to look at for its pipe infrastructure too as well. I also know that there's individual pipes that are burst, and they're not, they're not our mains, but throughout Allegiant Park, which is something that I brought up, and this was a problem, I know, in Griffith Park years ago, and it worries me because of water pressure. I go there, walking in the park every single morning, and there's one guy who literally goes from place to place, sticking in redwood and holes, hoping they'll expand, plugging it, going through, you know, little ponds of water. We have beautiful water features in Allegiant Park that were never planned. I mean, we have streams and rivers and wetlands and all sorts of things, but unfortunately, it's not there. So I'd like to work closely with the department and with our Department of Rec and Parks on Allegiant Park. I think it's long overdue and the amount of water we're losing. Just to conclude, I mean, this hasn't happened quickly enough. I would like to, I don't know, Greg, if you're going to put forward as an amendment? Mr. Smith? Are you putting forward a formal amendment for a three-day?
Four-day.
Okay. Well, I would certainly be supportive of it because this didn't happen quickly enough. We have dead lawns, we have burst pipes. I think we have a very confused residents that are here in Los Angeles. Let's simplify this. Let's congratulate ourselves and with the department, and everybody collectively did well, which was save water. I think May or April was the least in, how many years? It was like in a decade?
Well, actually, we, in the last 12 months since mandatory conservation has started, we've saved about 30, 35 billion gallons of water, which is equivalent to the amount of water that's used on an annual basis by the cities of Long Beach, Burbank, Santa Monica, and Beverly Hills combined. We've saved that much water. It's a huge accomplishment.
And that's a great statistic. I mean, people want to do right, but it doesn't have to come at the expense of killing their plants and bursting their pipes. So let's get it, let's get it right. And, Mr. Smith, I think spacing that pressure out as well as keeping our plants alive is the way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Labonge. Mr. Cardenas, then Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Where do we get our water?
Most of our water comes from hundreds of miles away. It's imported from the Owens Valley, from Northern California, through the Bay Delta, and from the Colorado River.
Okay. And how much of the water do we get that's underneath the ground, underneath our feet?
It varies. Lately, it's been running around 11% of our water from groundwater, mostly in the San Fernando Valley.
So we basically depend on other sources of water other than the water we can get that we own underneath our feet?
Correct.
Okay. So that's what makes this matter even more serious, because we don't control those sources, correct?
That is correct, and all of those sources are stressed right now.
Okay. And would the city of Los Angeles have grown to the second-largest city in the country and one of the strongest economies in the world had we not had this water?
No, sir. We would probably be about a tenth of the size that we are right now if we had to depend on local water.
So having the right amount of water available to us as businesses, as residences, is an economic issue as well as far as sustainability of our community, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to ask you those questions, make sure that we all understand how important this water is. It's not just a fun and game thing. It's not just something about, well, maybe we save a little water, maybe we don't. Thank God, we're saving a lot of water. How are we doing when it comes to saving water over the last three, four years, when it comes to our expectations, our goals, and our need to save water? Have we been doing a good job, a poor job, a great job? How would you describe it?
Well, we've got some long-term water conservation goals set to conserve 50,000 acre-feet a year, which is about, you know, normally we would use, say, 600,000 acre-feet a year, so it's a fairly substantial amount. And we're incrementally moving towards that every year. When we implemented the emergency ordinance recently, it was a dramatic shift in the amount of water consumed in L.A. I think we all realize that this is probably not sustainable over the long term, but it's necessary that when we have bad climatic conditions like we've had in the past, and even to a certain extent this year, a lot of people are looking at this year and saying, hey, it's a great year. Why do we still have to conserve water? Well, the fact of the matter is that we're at a below-normal year for California statewide. The Colorado River watershed is in the 10th year of drought. They only had a 70% runoff this last year. Even in our eastern Sierra, which we had a pretty good snowpack here, we're only estimating 95% of normal runoff. So we need to be able to conserve to accommodate these kind of climatic changes.
Okay. Now, there was a study that referred to perhaps the conservation of water and the restricting of watering only on certain days, currently Mondays and Thursdays, that they may have contributed or did contribute to the water main breaks that happened over the last year or so.
Yes. At the request of the council, the department did convene an expert panel to take a look at this issue of water main breaks and tried to make a determination. I've got Professor J.P. Bardet from USC. He was, he headed up the team that took a look at that. And perhaps it might be enlightening for Professor Bardet to summarize the report for you.
Well, my main question is, is it conclusive that they contributed to it, or it's possible that they contributed to it? The watering, the restriction of the number, the days in which we water in the city of L.A.?
Well, first, I'm J.P. Bardet from USC. Yes, our team, investigation team, was made of experts in the academia and also in the industry. And we noticed late in our study this fluctuation in water pressures. I mean fluctuation, not increase of water pressure.
Fluctuations in water pressure.
Yes. And these fluctuations coincided very well with Mondays and Thursdays, a two-day, where we water lawns in Los Angeles. When you put these fluctuations in the context of an aged and corroded cast-iron water systems, you see basically failures due to fatigue. So we are recommended to avoid these fluctuations by any means in order to keep our systems working as long as possible.
So you're still at a point where it may have contributed, or you're actually saying that it did contribute?
Well, a system is 7,200 miles long. It's a long system, long enough to connect actually Los Angeles to Paris.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
It's a complicated system. But we believe this would fix immediately the problems that we faced for summer 2010.
Well, the question of the Department of Water and Power, before the study, there seemed to be a rash of water main breaks. And then since the study, have we tracked how many water main breaks there have been? Because we haven't changed the watering days.
Correct.
And my main point to you is that I think we shouldn't spend too much time and energy assuming that the watering days restriction that we have currently is that big of a factor. I believe that the biggest factor is the age of the system, the biggest factor. Now, whether or not the watering days is a factor, I'm not saying it's not, but I don't think it's one of the biggest factors, especially if we look at the fact that it seemed, we seem to have a spike. But it's my understanding that certainly on the news, I haven't seen as many news crews out there showing water main breaks since that rash that we had over a certain period of time. And I'll push my button again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Kretz, Mr. Zein, Ms. Perry, Hahn, and Smith. Mr. Labonge.
Hey, Jim, you remember odd and even under Jimmy Carter's administration?
Yes.
Gas was 63 cents. I remember sitting up at 5:30 in the morning. It could be figured out odd and even on license plate. I think it's difficult, though, when you have a neighborhood. I have a problem with the odd and even. I would rather say, on our bills that we receive, you have a statement here, it's the 100 cubic feet, is that the HFC?
That's a billion units, yes.
Which comes out to like...
748 gallons.
Forty gallons. What's that average person use?
Typical, single-family homeowner uses about 12 HCF a month.
12 HCF. So if I'm at 14, I'm a little high.
A little bit.
But I went down from 9, I was at 26 in 2002. It's an old bill that I keep in the desk here. But with that being said here, I would rather see members, if we want to try to educate the public, have a billing system that says exactly what you're doing, and work off the bill. If Tom and Bridgette Labonge and Charles and Mary Kate are using too much water, it should say on my bill here, I think, in a way. Kay, are you have the capability of doing that?
Not right now. We are, we do have a new bill redesign in the process that's going to help you out a lot more. It'll have the tier one and tier two usage amounts on your bill, which I think will be helpful. What we don't have the ability to do, though, is track compliance on every single customer. So when we came up with, for the emergency ordinance, the watering days, the predominant driver on that was to make something that was easy to communicate and that was fairly easy to enforce.
Right.
And we can enforce a Tuesday, Thursday, or we can enforce the odd and even fairly easy, because you can drive around and see who's not complying with that. But to have everybody have a separate goal and kind of be on the honor system, there's basically no enforcement potentially.
Well, I just think it's a way you find them. I mean, you add an extra percentage if you're higher than what you do. That's something that kind of gets people in the touch.
We don't have that capacity in the bill.
I understand. I'm just thinking that as you go to the future. I just think it's real important. Water is very important. I want to ask a technical question. Mr. Cardenas has some questions. Was Owens Lake and Mono Lake, were they, what kind of lakes are they?
They're saline lakes.
They were terminal lakes?
Yes.
So that means the water that went to Owens Lake never left Owens Lake. So Los Angeles was fortunate to figure that out and bring it here, correct?
I think so, yes.
You think so, but you're good water power. Man, I want to make that point, because I don't want to be totally bad people here. This is important. The airport, the harbor, and water power built this city, and it's important that these decisions be made so we continue that. And we helped build the Hoover Dam, which is going to celebrate its 75th anniversary shortly. I just think the billing is, it's difficult in that sense. And what kind of input have you had with the neighborhood councils and your outreach there?
It's been positive for the most part. I think, I think most people are being supportive of the need to conserve water.
There's no question.
Everybody would rather use more, use as much water as they want, but people seem to understand the needs.
Right. I think it's just how it goes. I'll push my button for additional questions.
Mr. Rosenthal is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much. First of all, good morning.
Good morning.
Bottom line is, the way we were doing it isn't working because the pipes can't handle it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the results of the report show that there's a whole lot of factors that contribute towards the pipe failure. I think, I don't think Professor Bardet would disagree that the age and condition of the pipe is probably the primary factor, and the best thing we can do is replace more pipes. But when you start looking at other contributing factors, pressure fluctuations are definitely a cause. Not so much overpressurization or cavitation, but it's really the unpressurizing and repressurizing and cycling that caused the problem.
Since they're over 200 years old, the pipes, to begin with, it's more, on a more regular basis would be the best way to deal with these aging pipes, correct?
A replacement schedule on a regular basis.
So odd and even days, I'm pretty simple. Odd and even. How about three days a week for each? Every other day, you know, in your mind, odd and even. How would that be if it was six days out of the seven that the odd and evens worked it out?
That would correspond to phase two of the emergency ordinance. Currently, we're in phase three, and phase three calls for two days per week.
I see. So we could start with two days a week, and if we get into a better water situation, we could go to three days. we could go to three days.
That's the way the ordinance is designed, yes.
All right, so two days a week is simple enough. You think?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So that's story one. Story two, what if you're in a high red flag area like I have in the Palisades and in Brentwood and in the canyons, and the red flag comes out? What happens in those days?
Well, we've got, as a result of the way this was handled last year, we instituted provisions and the council approved a variance provision in the ordinance. So we get together with the fire department, they go and assess the particular area, and we have the ability to make exemptions for certain areas for fire protection.
And you also believe before 9 and after 4 is the best timeframe?
Yeah, if you're watering in the middle of the day, especially when it gets really hot, most of that water is wasted.
And how do we tell that to the gardeners that come to the people's homes and start watering 9, 10, 11, 12, 1 o'clock? What do you tell the gardeners that do it as?
Well, we're doing outreach to all segments of the community. We have multilingual materials that we're presenting. We're reaching out to the business community, the gardening community through garden, garden centers and other outlets like that.
Okay, so before 9 and after 4, odd and even days, four days a week, 2 and 2.
2 and 2, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kretz.
Yeah, I still don't understand why we're going in the direction of 2 and 2 as opposed to 3 and 3. Obviously, we know it would be better for the lawns, but my question is for, for the actual brittle pipes, would we not be better off allowing the same amount of water, but doing it three days a week even, three days a week odd? Instead of having four days of higher pressure and three days of less pressure, wouldn't it make sense to have six days of even pressure? Wouldn't that protect our pipes more effectively?
Well, I'd probably let Professor Bardet comment on the mechanics of it, but one of the things that's going on here is the number of times the pipe is being cycled from high to low pressure. So by going to six days, you're actually adding more cycles, but I don't...
So then by going to four days, you're adding more cycles. So then we should leave it the way it is.
Put their smaller amplitude on the cycles because there's not as, not as much pressure, only half the people are on any given day. I mean, there's no, there's no like...
I asked the professor whether that actually makes sense. That makes no sense to me, the way you've explained it.
Well, there are two factors. The cycles, the number of cycles, and the amplitudes of the cycles. We're trying to decrease the amplitude of the cycle as much possible. We always, I mean, we have cycles on a daily routine, on a daily basis, but we don't want to have large cycles. So whatever works, whatever decreases the amplitude of the cycles and the water pressures is, would be a good measure.
So two days a week, four days a week is better than two in terms of the health of the pipe, but six days a week would be worse?
I'm just saying, I don't think, well, you're...
I'm asking the professor that question.
Well, I must say, we based our findings on some pressure sensors, and we did recommend to the department to deploy more sensors to actually see the effect of this, whatever new measure we take on the water pressures in our systems. So I think we need to do something, measure our effects, and take corrective actions if we're on the wrong track. But I do believe that now we are facing a short-term measure. We need to move forward, so we don't want to see a repeat of what happened last summer.
But you're saying six days a week watering would not be better than four days a week? Yes or no?
Six days a week, if you, would certainly decrease the amplitude of the cycles and therefore would produce less break according to our studies.
So for the, so for the health of the pipe, six days a week rather than four would be a healthier approach?
As in our studies, you're right.
Thank you. I'll press my time again. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Department of Water and Power is a monopoly in Los Angeles, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Monopoly. There's no other choice. It's either a P or nothing.
There are no other water purveyors in the city, correct?
And it's confusing amongst the colleagues regarding the two days, the four days, the six days, whichever, even, even and odd. You mentioned enforcement. What are the statistics on enforcement from the Department of Water and Power? How many people have been cited? How many people have been observed violating the current rules that exist?
We, since, since the beginning of enforcement, we've had about 20,000 reports that have been investigated. We've issued over 7,000 warnings. We've issued 188 Level 2 citations, which is the first monetary citations, and then it trails off 20-something Level 3 citations and a half a dozen citations at the higher levels.
And the citation means a fine, a penalty?
Correct.
When it comes to the billing, the billing comes at the end of two months. So if we give someone a bill, it's going to come at the end of two-month cycle of using water and using power. One way or another, the people are going to pay, whether it's the even and odd or some other formula that comes up. If they exceed what is permitted, they're going to be paying on that water and power bill, and those rates keep going higher and higher. Now, do you get complaints from the people regarding the money that they're charged for the water that they use?
You mean regular complaints about high water bills and...
High water bills, excessive water bills. So whatever formula we come up with, if we say you can only do it two days, even and odd, or whatever, three days and two hours, or eight minutes, or whatever, the bottom line is if they exceed whatever's permitted, they're going to be paying the dollars, not a penalty, but they're going to be paying at a higher tier, whether it be two, three, or four, whatever the case may be, regarding, regardless of enforcement, whatever they use, they're going to be paying for.
Yes, whatever water they use, they pay for.
And that in and of itself should be some incentive to the consumers to conserve, and as you said initially, it was 7%. We wanted to get 10%, and now we're saving what Long Beach and Beverly Hills and other neighboring communities use a long period of time.
We're saving about 19% right now. We set a goal of 15%.
15, okay, so we're four above what we've asked for, and if we reduce something, we may not be saving as much as we wish to save because of the precious water supply, but the fact of the matter is, the people of Los Angeles, business and residential, that use that water, they're going to be paying dearly for that cost of water as the rates continue to increase.
Yes, and we're under shortage of rates right now, which is the second part of our water conservation plan. We have the emergency ordinance, which limits uses, and then we also have the shortage of rates, as you pointed out.
But if you exceed the tiers that you are prescribed, you're going to be paying more for that water. So whatever formula we come up with, if people want to violate that, they're going to be paying for that. There's no exemptions for that. They're going to pay dearly out of the pocketbook. So that should be an incentive for a lot of people, in addition to a non-confusing plan that says, this is what we wish you to do to conserve. If we conserve 10%, 15%, I do a lot of conservation with my water just because of the economic impact and the fact of the resources. I mean, those are the two factors. I don't think we're really hitting that issue about how much it's costing as the rates keep going up, which I think we need to emphasize. When they go to a higher tier, they're going to be paying more. So whatever formula, it needs to be simple, and I think with the conversation we've heard so far, it's rather complex. It should be simple, odd and even. It should be a simple plan, but it doesn't seem to be as simple as I thought it would be. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think in, there are few areas of complex public policy where there have been such extraordinary success, as in the area of water conservation. And do you know, for example, within the Metropolitan Water District Service area over the last 20 years, what the results of conservation efforts have been there? Can you give us those statistics?
Well, I'm not familiar with all of metropolitan statistics, but in the city of Los Angeles, in the last 25 years or so, we're basically using less water now than we were 25 years ago in this city despite the fact that we've added a million more customers to our base.
So it's an exceptional success story when you, when you think of it in that context, that the level of conservation that have been realized by voluntary measures, by cost factors and...
Incentives.
By engineering incentives, by new, new construction standards, new landscaping standards, all of those things have been a tremendous success. And yet, we still continue to struggle in serious drought conditions. We still use, in this state, 25% of our electricity in the state of California is used to move or to treat water. And so there's a direct correlation between our water demand and impacts on global warming, impacts on local air quality, and so many, many other aspects of our environmental impact. So I think that this is really important, that we're having this discussion. I'm concerned that, from much of what I've been hearing about the watering prohibition as well as this alternative measure, that the alternatives have not been fully thought through. And so I'm concerned about moving forward with this new policy, even though it's clear that the existing status quo situation has, has not, has had ramifications that were not anticipated, that probably should have been anticipated, and that we need to fix. But I'm not convinced yet that this alternative proposal fully thinks through many of the options that we need to consider. For example, can you tell me, as we've succeeded with these conservation measures over the past 20 years, to what extent have the different categories of use varied in their success in conservation? For example, can you compare business use versus residential, multifamily, residential versus single-family residential? Can you give some, some example of that? Because clearly, the watering prohibition disproportionately impacts single-family homeowners more than other categories of use. So is it fair to single-family homeowners to impose these prohibitions when they may or may not be disproportionate contributing factor to excess use?
I can't really comment on the disproportionate nature of it, but I can tell you who's, who's been very successful in conserving.
Okay.
In the last year, since we've instituted the mandatory program, single-family homeowners have been the most successful conservationists. They've saved about 24%. Multifamily is about 10%. Commercial, 16%. Industrial, about 16%. And in the governmental sector, 33%.
So if you look at multifamily residential, for example, this is an area where most tenants are not separately metered. You're usually, certainly the landscaping is all paid for by the landlords, and even if there is separate metering. So this prohibition on watering is not going to impact that sector at all, right?
Well, the outdoor water use restrictions still apply to multifamily buildings.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. I'll come back. I'll push my button again.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. When we look at this, this whole issue of water and water usage, and we're talking about our behavior and how we condition ourselves to change our behavior as a city in using water, my question really is about, when we complement these types of efforts with what Department of Water and Power is doing, can you just briefly describe how we're storing water in the cities? We have access to water for the purposes of lawns and gray water usage, if you, if you will? That's one question. The other one is, when we have water go through the river system and the river spills out into the ocean, how much of that water do we capture? How much of that water can we capture to start looking at not only responding to behavior of our own selves, but also how we are looking at plans for storing water for the purposes of lawns and our greenways? Can you address those two?
Most of the, of the storage capacity that we have for, for water is in the form of groundwater storage in the city of Los Angeles, and most of that is in the San Fernando Valley Groundwater Basin. You may have seen over the weekend, there was an article in the Daily News regarding the contamination that's occurred in the San Fernando Valley Groundwater Basin. This has significantly impaired our ability to store water in that basin and then to extract water again. It's also going to impinge on our ability to reap the benefits of stormwater capture because, but what we basically do with stormwater capture, working with LA County, is we capture tens of thousands of acre-feet a year of stormwater runoff. We spread it on the spreading basins that percolates into the groundwater, and then it's available at a later time for us to pump out and serve to our customers. But to the extent that when it goes into that groundwater basin, it's getting contaminated, we can't use all that water. So what we are going to be having to do is build treatment facilities to treat the water that we pump out of the basin so that we can capture the stormwater, so that we can store water for droughts, and eventually so that we can store highly-treated wastewater, even in the ground, like they're doing in Orange County right now, and use that as a, as a potable supply. So those are all things we're looking at, but they're going to be contingent on us getting treatment and cleanup facilities in the San Fernando Valley.
In the River Master Plan, we talk about the river system playing more than just one role. Right now, it's just a flood control channel. It's been conceived as such. Isn't that an opportunity to look at designs in Israel and other places, in Chicago and Northeast, they're actually using their, of Tempe, Arizona, they're using their flood control channels as containment for water, storing water, and has multiple purposes. Do we see ourselves going down that road? I know you've been very supportive.
Right, and you, and I think you know that we're working on a number of projects, wetland restoration projects, infiltration projects, habitat enhancement, recreation in addition to water supply. Those are all potentials for the LA River and its tributary streams.
I think one thing we should do is, is talk about how Department of Water and Power is being proactive in future designs to contain water, to essentially find ways to generate it back into our greenways, to rejuvenate our aquifer, and, and that's something that the public doesn't really know about. What they know about is the bill, increasing bill prices, and now we're trying to change the behavior, and it's all necessary. But we should also talk about how we're being opportunistic in these different scenarios. So I appreciate the questions my colleagues are asking, and do you ever think about color coding? How and when we do this, days on and off? Maybe that's a more direct way of getting people to understand if you're a certain color of a bill, that maybe that triggers that day you can use the water. It's just something beyond just a lot of verbiage and letters. Multilingual, multi-cultural audience, users of water. Maybe the color coding system might be another element you might consider.
I mean, we can certainly do that. I think the, the, again, ease of communication, ease of enforcement are our primary objectives. I think house numbers, if somebody, and pretty much everybody knows what their house number is, odd or even, but we can add a color component to that, too, to help communicate. That's probably a great idea.
Just to reinforce it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everybody for the first time. For the second time, we have Ms. Perry, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Smith, Mr. Carter, Mr. Kretz, and Mr. Krikorian. Ms. Perry.
Oh, wow. What do you mean, wow?
And now Mr. Zine, too. If you wanted to get in on the action. Ms. Perry.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. President. I feel a little bit like a dog chasing his tail. And this is a very straightforward, fairly simple analysis, and the reason I feel like a dog chasing her tail is back in July 2010, I did support Councilman Smith's motion to allow irrigation three days per week at eight minutes, as opposed to two days per week at 15 minutes, giving us a savings of six minutes of water per week. So here we are, still having this discussion, back at where we started. And I thank you both, the DWP and the dean there, the Viterby School of Engineering. It's straightforward logic. I think it's certainly worth a try, and I think Mr. Smith is going to make some comments in a minute, and I want you to know in advance, because I'm not going to press my button again, that I support his recommendation. And I think we ought to move forward and give this a try. If it doesn't work, we can come back in 90 days or 60 days and certainly revise it again, but I think it would be folly not to do anything today.
Right.
And I think we need to implement some linear strategy that we can at least examine with new data to see if it functions or not.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I would like to ask, how many water mains have broken recently?
The latest numbers I have in, for June, we had 76 leaks and breaks. 15 of those were major. That's down about 30% from June a year ago. It's also worthy to note that in May, the previous month, we had only 53, which is our lowest number in the seven years on the, the tracking that I've got in front of me right now. So we have been focusing on this.
May of this year.
May of this year, yes.
We've had the lowest. So does the department really feel like two days a week is continually to contribute to these breaks?
I think one of the things you need to look at, even though May was, was the lowest in the seven years, April and May are usually the lowest, the lowest months. These things come in cycles, usually in the warmest months and in the coldest months are when we see the highest activity. So we're about ready to come up on the, the second peak of the year in the hottest months, and then we'll see a peak again in the, in the colder months, since the heavy irrigation season coincides with those hottest months.
Okay, okay. Let me ask, okay, let me ask you this question. Apparently, according to your report, we've had 20,000 reports of people breaking the law and watering on other days of the week. Did those just come as anonymous tips, or somebody perhaps was watching Channel 7 when Greg Smith admitted that he was not following the law? How did these tips come to us?
They come as, they come as, on the internet, they come through telephones.
Okay, so then out of 20,000, apparently you only investigated 7,000 of those. And of those 7,000, only 188 got a citation.
There were, there were 7,300 warnings, which means that when they went out and looked at it, they substantiated some of the claims. They went out and looked at all 20,000 of those, though.
They did. And how many people do we have going out and looking to see whether people are breaking the law?
I think the staff right now is around 20. I don't know, Lance Brown is here, I couldn't tell you.
20 people. So I guess my question is, do you think that we were able to achieve our incredible conservation numbers because of your enforcement, or because of people just deciding to cut down based on their water bill, or based on those of us who just feel like we should obey the law and only water twice a week?
I think, I think the vast majority is, is people wanting to do the right thing.
I do, too.
But I also think that, that a threat of enforcement... But I also think that a threat of enforcement serves a purpose in something like this.
Well, I don't think we're enforcing it as it is, basically. I don't think we're doing a good job of enforcing it. Again, unless you've given Greg Smith a fine when we all know he wasn't following the law, then we're not enforcing it properly. And I guess my point is, it seems to me, whether it's two days a week or three days a week, before nine, after four, we're only doing that for those 20 staff members who have the opportunity to enforce it. That's the only reason we have these rules, is for enforcement. I think a better course of action is to allow people to water, you know, when they want, for a short amount of period. I don't know why we don't allow people to water on the weekends, turn your sprinklers on on the weekends. I don't know why we're, you know, keeping it on weekdays. And my question on the before nine or after four, what's the purpose of that? Is that for evaporation or is that for enforcement?
Evaporation.
Okay. Again, that's not our problem. That's not our problem. We can't regulate common sense. If somebody doesn't understand that the best use of their water is not in the midday sun, we're not going to be able to regulate that. That's not our problem. If we tell them 10 minutes a day or eight minutes a day, what do we care when they use those minutes? It's still the same amount of water. You're still conserving the same amount of water. We can't regulate common sense. And if it's, that's not our problem. So it seems to me, we are devising these rules for enforcement only, and I don't think we're doing a good job enforcing it in the first place. Let's give people the opportunity to water when they want, for a short amount of time, how their yards, how their sun happens to hit their homes. I think that would be the better course of action, colleagues. And I think if we want to come back and evaluate it in six months, we can. But the key is conserving. That's what we're trying to do, is conserve water. We've done it, and I think we've done it because people have stepped up and done the right thing, either based on paying a higher fee on their bill because of their breaking a certain tier or because they want to do the right thing. I think we ought to get rid of the before nine or after nine, before four, and I think we ought to let people water the amount of water that they think fits their landscaping. They're paying for it. People pay for what they use. And to devise an entire ordinance based on whether or not 20 people at DWP can enforce it, I think is going in the wrong direction. So there.
Thank you. Mr. Smith is next, and then Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Kretz.
Fine. Thank you. Well, I think I've heard the conversation enough to know that I think people want a little bit of a change. So, members of the council, I'm going to make a motion to make the change, but this is an up-down vote. Therefore, we can't change the ordinance today. We have to make a recommendation, send it back to Water and Power Commission. And so I'd make the motion that we make this recommendation. Number one, that we consolidate levels two, or Phase Two and Three of the ordinance into a secondary level. Leave four alone. That's the emergency provision. So if there is emergency, we'd have them. So we consolidate Two and Three and get rid of the multiplicity of levels. Number two, we ask for a three-day-a-week watering scheme, which would be odd and even, and limit it to eight minutes a day rather than the 15 minutes a day, which will actually save water for Los Angeles. I think those three elements are what we've been talking around this chamber. I think it solves the problem, and I ask that we move this back to Water and Power Commission with those recommendations.
Mr. Cardenas.
So he's including the I's.
Move the question.
All right. Mr. Kretz, Kukorian, Zine, Labonge on for the second time. So there's a 10-member vote instead of an eight-member vote. It's not debatable. A yes vote is then debate. Please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
10 I's, three noes.
Debate closes. That will now take us first to Mr. Smith's motion.
I don't understand, and I'm sure if I don't, nobody else will.
If you have information, if you'd like to clarify your motion.
To clarify, currently, there's a proposal for four phases.
Right.
One phase is the voluntary phase. Phase four is the mandatory absolute end-of-the-world phase. Two and three are where the confusion comes. So we would eliminate two and three and consolidate it into one middle section, that is the proposal which we have, which is to consolidate the two levels, then go to a three-day-a-week watering scheme with odd and even, and limit it to eight minutes a day rather than 15 minutes a day. So instead of 30 minutes a week, you get down to 24. That saves water. It gives people the opportunity to do three days a week instead of two, and I think everybody is happier with that.
No, I'm not happy.
I was thinking for the clarification. Sorry, Mr. Kretz, you have a point of information or clarification? No further debate is allowed on this. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't want to debate it. I agree with it, so I'm not arguing that. My only question is, if we 245 it...
It's not technically a 245.
What is it?
It is, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, as it's explained, has jurisdiction-setting policy, but in consultation with the council. So it does have to mandatorily come here, whether or not it's a 245. It's not 245. It had to come here, and we can vote it up or down.
The question for me is...
Under the ordinance. That's just what the ordinance says.
And making this point, I agree with exactly what you've proposed. The question is, if we don't accept this, is DWP prepared to implement something different for the summer? Or would we, instead of making the change that required it to come back... From two days to four days, wind up with no different policy for months and then...
Until something that the Board of Water and Power, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney and/or Clerk, if the Board of Water and Power Commissioners does not send something that we concur with, the policy stays as it is. That's my understanding.
So the question is...
They would have to, if it was rejected, they'd have to send something else back for that to occur.
But if they like this idea, is the department prepared to implement it quickly enough that we actually benefit? Or are we actually making it worse by going a summer with the same policy?
Unfortunately, we're, whether they're prepared or not goes back into debate. We can reopen debate if you want to, but you can ask them privately if you'd like, but our floor debate is closed under the rules of council. Once the...
It seems like a key informational question if it's not implementable.
I'm not agreeing or disagreeing. We do have to abide by those rules, though. Somebody may want to talk to you privately about that, or somebody make a motion to suspend the rules, to go back to debate. I'm just enforcing...
I'd make that motion just to ask this one question.
Okay. Please open the rolls and suspending the rules. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 I's, one no.
Okay, that carries. Mr. Kretz? Do you want to answer that question?
Yes. The question is, if we make this alternative proposal, is DWP able to implement it in a timely manner so that it actually applies for this coming summer?
It's already summer.
Or this current summer?
It would depend on the timing. I mean, I'm assuming we have to come back and go through committee and bring it back to the council, so I...
Well, is that the case?
Ms. Perry, would you want it back in committee, or would you want to waive it out of committee if it was that plan?
What do you want me to do? No, let me waive it out.
So we would schedule it as quickly as the Board of Water and Power, as Council President, I'd schedule it. We could have a placeholder, but it would require action by the Board of Water and Power Commissioners.
So do we have a sense of what that timeline would be?
I can't speak for my board. I think timing-wise, there's a Board of Water and Power Commissioners scheduled for the later part of July. We should be able to get it on that agenda, and beyond that, I really can't comment, Councilman.
Well, I'm not sure what to recommend, whether we should let them go through with this to start and then make this change as timely as possible, or stick with the two days a week.
We suspended rules. We now have five speakers on the queue. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Zine, Mr. Kukorian for the second time, and then Mr. Smith and Ms. Perry for third times, in that order. Mr. Labonge? Would you want to answer that? If you want to respond to that, Mr. Smith?
This goes to the commission. They could get it back here in two weeks. I will call the president of the commission who lives in my district, say, move it fast, please. They've already discussed these options. They're aware of that. So I think we can get it back here in a couple of weeks. Ms. Perry can waive it, because we've already discussed it here. We could have this in a couple of weeks' time, if they want to. If not, we default back to the current rules, which is the two-day watering system. That's the problem. But that's, at least as a fallback position, we're not going to lose in the interim period of time because we don't have an ordinance. The current ordinance stays in effect.
Okay. Mr. Labonge?
Mr. McDaniel, Professor, soils are different throughout the region, correct?
Yes.
So time is an issue as it relates to how the soils are able to saturate the water. If you do a three-day, eight-minute, is that what Mr. Smith is proposing? Are you proposing, Mr. Smith, on the change? I'm interested in the soils element. And I asked the professor and Mr. McDaniel, who's the head of the water system. Saturation is sometimes what helps flower get to the root system. If you water lightly, it doesn't get as deep. Is that correct, Mr. McDaniel?
Normally, what you try to do is take the amount of water that you're going to apply and spread it over short periods of time, as opposed to putting it all on once. Actually, the larger concern is that if you put too much water on it once, you have excessive runoff.
Right.
So spreading it out over smaller periods of time is not inconsistent with good watering.
So Mr. Smith, his idea is a good idea, then? Mr. McDaniel?
It's very doable, and the staff will get on it.
I want to hear from the professor from USC. We, you think so, too?
I think so, too.
So, but on the issue, they didn't come forward. The great thing about USC, they came forward and volunteered. I remember you were at the first hearing that we had on this, which is great about our universities, whether it's UCLA, Caltech, SC, or all the state colleges, they came forward. The question I wanted to ask then on the root system, and that's not a factor on that. The issue, though, on the piping system, the Coldwater Canyon pipe, the big break, that had nothing to do with the system. It had just an age-riveted pipe, correct, Mr. McDaniel?
I do not believe that it had anything to do with that. I'll ask Professor Seuss to confirm.
And if you showed a graph of all the pipes in the city, most of the pipes over west of Vermont Avenue, where soils may be different than the central part of Los Angeles, is that true?
There's a number of them in the Hollywood area, which also corresponds to high corrosivity of the soil. There was also a pretty good...
Soils have a tremendous aspect of it.
... in the valley, similar kind of situation.
And then also, someone had a statement there, that some of the pipes related to the war effort of World War II, that the pipes, the steel wasn't as strong. Is that true?
That's a theory out there. I haven't had the data to substantiate that.
How about the professor? You look at everything.
You are right. We've seen some steels post-war area which are very weak. They leak, actually, quite a great deal, but they don't burst.
Uh-huh.
But they leak. There are medicine and some other steel coming from Germany or from...
And we'll make a closing statement here. In 2013, it will be the 100th anniversary of the Aqueduct. We have to attack our infrastructure, and we have to work on the issues of water. I support DWP absolutely on our water issues, because if we don't have water, we cannot survive. So any public information, any effort that goes to this is good. I just want it to be reasonable, fair. And the only question I had in the opening remarks, Jim, sometimes I don't know what day it is, and so it's important that we make that easier on the people if they have some escape clause. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Professor?
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Tom, it is, what, Tuesday? That's when you did the flag salute.
What's the date?
The 6th of July. A couple of days ago is 4th of July.
And what do you do on leap year if you have this?
Well, not going to worry about leap year. We can't even get this settled, either on leap year. Question regarding apartments, condos, business structures, how are we getting them to comply when you have an apartment building with one meter, or you have the condo developments with one meter, or you have a business with one meter? How do we get them to comply with this conservation?
Well, on the emergency conservation ordinance, it primarily has to do with prohibited uses and watering schedules and that sort of thing. So the same compliance applies to those kind of multifamily...
That's outside. What about inside?
That's outside, because the emergency ordinance only applies to the outside water use. For the shortage year rates on the inside water use, it has to do with how you calculate your Tier One usage. And whereas, single-family homes, we've got a formula that involves lot size, temperature zone, and family size to determine what your Tier One water use budget, if you will, is. For multifamily structures, it's based on your average water use or your winter time water use, so it's not as seasonally dependent as a single-family home.
So in a multi-residential apartment, that would be a different formula, but how do we get the conservation when, is there a way to get the conservation other than the bill that comes in for the proprietor of that property?
You know, one of the things that we've been working on is targeting the fixture replacements for the landlords. Since the landlords pay the water bill, they're usually very interested, and we continue to have our rebates for the high-efficiency toilets, and that's been probably one of the most effective things that we can do in the multifamily.
So we have programs designed for those folks?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kukorian?
I'll wait till it comes back.
Okay. Ms. Perry?
Call to the question as amended by Mr. Smith.
Okay. Question's been called. We have two speakers on the queue, Mr. Kretz and Mr. Labonge, but it's for the third time, so it's a simple majority vote. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 I's, three noes.
Okay. For our second time, we've closed debate. We have Mr. Smith's motion, seconded by myself and Ms. Perry. Please, everybody ready to vote? Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 I's, one no.
All right. That carries. And we just reiterate to the department, we're ready to turn this around, so if you can communicate to the board that they want to have a special meeting or anything, we're ready to schedule it here and waive it out of committee.
We'll get on it right away.
And thank you to USC for their great work, and thank you to the department for continuing to conserve and working with us on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to the next item called special.
Mr. President, item 11 was being held on the desk for staff.
Yes, we have staff here on item number 11. Mr. Cardenas? We'll take up item 11 next. Mr. Cardenas?
Could we have the mayor's grid office representatives up, please? Thank you. We covered this extensively in the Public Safety Committee, and the bottom line is, this is an opportunity for us to continue, the continuum of services when it comes to prevention and intervention services. There are a handful of contractors that are prevention contractors, intervention contractors in various parts of the city, and I just wanted to give you the opportunity to apprise the full council of anything that you might want to let them know, how are things coming along, what seems to be going on this summer, and what can we expect in the near future?
Specifically, in relation to what area, Mr. Councilman? Just in general?
Yeah, just in general. Just a general overview.
Okay. In general, in terms of prevention, we're just beginning to get retest back on the prevention clients. We're very excited about what we're seeing. We think we're making progress and we're going in the right direction. In terms of intervention, we're working very, very, very closely this summer with intervention workers through the Summer Night Lights program. We have increased funding for intervention workers for the summer to get through the rough period of the summer. Generally, I believe that our collaboration with council offices is improving in terms of providing information back and forth.
Okay. One of the things that we talked about was regarding the San Fernando Valley. When the current makeup of the grid zones was provided for and the contracts went out, it seemed to be that at that time in the San Fernando Valley, an opportunity for what we call that outside-the-grid zones contract for intervention was actually put out there. But apparently, either we didn't get enough responders or there weren't any responses or what have you. or what have you. It's a very specialized responsibility, right?
It is.
So the bottom line is, what we talked about in the committee was perhaps if there was an opportunity to move some money around or what have you, and then go back out to bid and perhaps see if we can capture a good organization who'd be willing to bid and contract with the city to do outside-the-grid-zone work for the San Fernando Valley. So that being the case, has your office been able to identify, if that opportunity were to be pursued, have you been able to identify the resources for that?
We have identified grant funding to establish a non-grid intervention zone in the San Fernando Valley. We need to craft out geographically what that zone looks like and look at a little bit of data to make sure that we're targeting the correct area. But we have identified funding through grant sources. That funding will be available October 1st.
October 1st?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, what I'd like to do, colleagues, is amend the transmittal to give the grid the authority to release an RFP for non-grid intervention services in the San Fernando Valley for a $225,000 amount for a 12-month period. And we will work with the mayor's office to see how that's coming along, but also that it be understood that the attempt would be for the RFP to be released hopefully sometime in August.
Correct.
And then so that by the time the money is available by October 1st, perhaps we will be successful in garnering a contract with a service provider in the San Fernando Valley for intervention services.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second.
Ms. Han?
Um...
Do you want to speak on this? Okay. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith.
Okay. Mr. Zein?
Thank you. The YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, have a variety of programs to keep our youth involved in positive activities, away from gangs and drugs, et cetera. I know that the West Valley YMCA has now teamed up with the North Harbor YMCA. They've got three YMCA's working together, and they're struggling for funds. Would the YMCA qualify under the program to divert some of these youth into something positive? And also, the Boys and Girls Clubs, we have a number of those in the valley that are also struggling for funds, and they could use these dollars to help bring in additional youth to keep them out of the negative in the environment.
The... There's a very specific criteria for intervention contracts, which have to do with youth that are primarily gang-involved. My suggestion would be that any contract provider, any contract that will be available to submit for funding once this RFP is released in August.
Well, one of the concerns I have, you talk about intervention and prevention. We're trying to keep them out of the gang.
Correct.
Once they're in a gang, and they are then gang-affiliated, it's difficult for them to break out.
It is, sir. It is.
So what about those youth that are on the border? For example, we have communities in the San Fernando Valley that have gang territory. To get those youth, before they get indoctrinated into the gang, into something positive. And there's other programs other than the Y and the Boys and Girls Clubs. That's great. But it seems that the gang intervention is shied away from those organizations to keep these youth involved in the summer programs, whether it be swimming or soccer. They've got a variety of great programs. And a lot of these youth from the valley are on scholarships. The problem is, these organizations are running out of funds, and we can keep those youth out of the gangs. Once they get in, now you want to rehabilitate them. That takes a whole 'nother set.
Correct.
But what about those youth in the community where they don't have a swimming pool, they don't have the niceties, and we could get them in something positive, intervention and prevention? I mean, the intervention, what I'm hearing say is that, once they're in a gang, then we want to get them out. Let's do it before they get in the gang.
No, I agree with you. The prevention contracts, the request for proposals for prevention will be released in October. And the YMCA, of course, will be eligible to apply for those funds like any other organization.
Okay. Well, I'm real concerned that the valley has been short-changed, except for, I think it's one grid in the San Fernando Valley. And if you look at the gang activity and the crime that's happening in the San Fernando Valley, I know it's worse in other parts of the city, but the fact is, we can use some of those precious dollars and stretch those dollars and keep these youth involved in something positive. So I commend my colleague, Mr. Cardenas, for bringing this forward, and your office for finding the grant funding. But those organizations who have already established themselves as positive environment, they've already got the proven record, we need to utilize and help them to keep these youth away, because once they're in the gang, I'll tell you, as you know, it's extremely difficult to pull them away from that.
I agree with you. The prevention requests for proposals, those will be released in October.
Okay.
And any organization that's serving youth in the prevention category will be eligible to apply for it.
We will be putting the word out and have them apply, and we'll monitor and see what happens.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Gueramo, that's a perfect example of why I think it's important that everybody in the community understand that what we're doing here in Los Angeles is very distinct and different than what we have been doing in the past. We always funded intervention and prevention services throughout the community. Now we have a much better defined, more accurately defined difference between what is intervention work and what is intervention services and what is prevention services. It's really wonderful to see the Boys Clubs and the YMCA's and a lot of organizations, even our parks and our class parks, do a lot of work. But most of that work, in some cases, 100% of the work that's done on those premises are prevention work. In some cases, you might find 10% or 20% of the work is actually intervention work. So that's one of the reasons why it's really important for us to continue to educate ourselves as a community, and also meld into the future the differences between what is prevention and intervention, and what kind of contracts we should or shouldn't have with certain organizations. And with all due respect to a lot of prevention-oriented organizations in the past, they had promised us that they would work with gang-involved youth, and we paid them for it. But at the same time, what we found out after the fact, after perhaps a year, or two, or 10 years of work, they were actually excluding gang-involved youth. And that's one of the reasons why it's really important for us to distinguish between the difference of a prevention contract and all the wonderful work that they do with that population, and intervention contracts, which tend to be about gang-involved youth, perhaps youth who already have criminal records, youth who have a probation officer, et cetera. That's intervention work. And it's a little bit more intricate than that, but just to give everybody an idea that there's a big, big difference between prevention and intervention work. You might go to other cities around the country, and they might blend them together still, like we did, but we don't do that anymore, correct?
That is correct. And I think that it's really important to even differentiate within the prevention category the difference between targeted prevention, which means you target the youth that are at the highest risk of developing a full identity as a gang member, and primary prevention. And as a matter of policy, we've made the distinction between those two, and a channeling resources primarily towards targeted prevention. That means identifying those youth in every community that are at the highest risk of becoming fully involved in gangs.
Thank you. And one of the things that I'd like to commend the mayor's office, and Mr. Cespedes, and all of the good people there in the mayor's office, we've come a long way, yet we all recognize that we have a long way to go.
We do.
Because this is an evolving process. Yet at the same time, what we all promised was more transparency. We had that yesterday. We even have more today and tomorrow than we had in the past. We have a lot more accumulation of information and honesty about what's really going on out there, and the ways in which we can change it and make it better. So one of the things that I'd like to thank everybody involved is, thank you for all your patience. Thank you for all your hard work. This is a good thing. Let's continue to move forward. And with the changes that were made in committee and the dialogue that we had today, again, it's just making it that much better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for your leadership on this issue here in our great city. Prevention intervention is all part of it. I want to thank you, Gueramo, for coming to my fundraiser for Venice 2000 the other night. And we just are putting two more gang intervention workers on Venice Beach.
That's correct.
Explain a little bit about Venice 2000 and how it operates in three...
Well, Venice 2000 is one of the agencies that we contract with to provide intervention services. They are, like many of our intervention agencies, I would say they're part of that group that we consider functioning at the highest level. And they came up with a plan to do fundraising through your office and through the community to secure the beaches this summer, because we do know that issues that start at the beach translate into different neighborhoods. So I came out, and so did you, to support Venice in their efforts to do a big sale, if you will, to get funding to do work of intervention on the beach this summer.
Yeah. Yeah. And colleagues, you know, Memorial Day weekend, there was an incident on the beach, because everybody comes to the beach. It's a great beach, Venice Beach. We love it. But some of the spillover comes right from areas where there's tremendous issues. And our police were extremely quick and responsive at that moment. But I think what Venice 2000 is doing is a huge plus, and I appreciate your support of it, and I appreciate, Mr. Cardenas, your support of it, and the committee with Mr. Wesson's people, and Mr. Park's people, and my folks working on it. It's all part of the strategy of lessening the violence that comes out of gangs. If we find things for people to do that's positive. And unfortunately, when violence does happen, the gang intervention and prevention, people know about it sometimes before even our police do. And so Venice 2000's been a great asset to us in Venice, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We now have this before us, as amended. No objection, that's a friendly amendment. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, called special, please.
Item 21, called special for cards.
All right. Dr. Clyde Williams on... Oh, sorry, item 21, Arnold Sacks, and then John Walsh.
Thank you again. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. My only comments about this item are MOU between the city and northeast Texas for the Garbanza Park Best Management Practices Project. A best management practices project, I was wondering that could be expanded to the city council? Because if any item in this city could use best management practices, it might be the operation of the city council. Thank you.
John Walsh, that next speaker?
John Walsh, co-blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is a Board of Public Works cost overrun. And remember, the mayor controls Board of Public Works, and everybody there gets about $100,000 a year and a car, all the appointees to the Public Works Board. None of the other DWP, they don't get paid. $2.5 million to a company called... That's a cost overrun for some work to be done at Garbanza Park. That's a company called Northeast Trees. I have an assignment for the 70,000 people out there. Google Northeast Trees. Find me. Become a reporter for our website. Find me the connection between Northeast Trees and the mayor through the Board of Public Works. Send it to me. Send it to our website, HollywoodEMS.org. We have to do some real detective work. Also, check city commission, check the Ethics Commission. How many north... Has anybody at Northeast Trees put in money, made contributions? Northeast Trees, you don't see them here. When you don't see people here, that means it's a done deal. It's a 14-to-nothing vote, $2.5 million while you are laying off people. And notice, we had recently, we just had an hour, over an hour discussion on watering the lawns. Nothing happened. Why was it an hour and a half? You can't see it out there. There were five TV cameras. When there are five TV cameras, they talk, and they talk, and they talk. Now there are no TV cameras. There's one that's turned off. When there's no TV cameras, this meeting goes like a hot knife through butter. When there's TV cameras, they preen in front of the TV cameras. We're going to have a riot. We may have a riot two blocks from here.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item. Mr. Zein?
HollywoodHighland.com. Dot org.
I'd like to speak. No. I just want to rise and congratulate and thank Northeast Trees for all their hard work. They've been treated a certain way, and, believe me, they've done tremendous work along the different corridors that before had no green, no trees. And thanks to them, they've got beautiful canopies, running along corridors that really needed this level of oxygen. And again, they've just done a tremendous job. I just want to make sure that was understood.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Zein, they're not a company, but a nonprofit that was brought in for the management of an existing park for the first time. Okay. Thank you. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 23, called special for cards.
Okay, Dr. Williams, Dr. Clyde Williams, item 23. Okay, he's not here. Mr. Walsh, if I come forward on item number 23 now? You have one minute left, sir.
One minute left. I was called a liar by Eric Garcetti. It says right here, Northeast Trees Incorporated. If it's nonprofit, it should take the...
Sir, we'll pause your time. I did not call you a liar. I just want you to know that it's a nonprofit organization. They're a very, very good organization.
Well, this is another issue. You know, I would have gone against this, but since it's my good friend, the Marina Del Rey 4th of July show, I don't think we should be subsidizing explosions. If we're going to have one of them, let's have one for the entire city in Mr. Zein's district, because that's where people show up. Subsidizing explosions. And if you're interested in another kind of explosion, take a look what's going to happen in front of the criminal courthouse when the verdict on the cop who murdered the person comes in.
Sorry, sir, we're talking about fireworks here.
I know it's not... You're not interested in talking about...
Mr. Walsh, we are always... I'll reiterate one last time, we're always interested in whatever you want to say a general public comment, or if it's on the agenda, but under our law and the law that governs your comments as well, we can't change that. So thank you. Thank you for your understanding. We appreciate it. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Didn't have any other cards on that item. Okay. Next item, please.
Item 25, called special for cards.
Okay. Dr. Williams, again, I think who's left. Please prepare the roll on 25 and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 27 for cards.
We just had one card, Mr. Walsh. She reached the limit for today, so we'll add that to the record. And please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved as well. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting or referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And the desk is clear.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? No announcements? Do we have any adjourning motions today?
Adjourning.
If I can please ask people to rise in council chambers for our adjourning motion. We'll start on this side first with you, Mr. Zein. If you'd like to make the first adjourning motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. A good friend of the community passed away, Marty Musucian, 63 years of age, passed away of gallbladder cancer at his Woodland Hills home on Friday, June 25th, surrounded by his loving family. Born February 12, 1947, in Beirut, Lebanon, he was the oldest of six children. In 1977, of August, moved to Reseda, opened his business, Musucian Auto Electric. Soon after moving to Reseda, the family became active in the community. His wife served in the Reseda Chamber, and the Reseda Chamber's president for several years. Marty was a family man who believed in doing good to all those around him. Those who knew Marty were proud to be considered his friend, for he was loyal, just, and to be a great person to be around. The whole community of Reseda mourns the loss of Marty for his devotion to family and contribution to the community. Survived by his wife of 33 years, Marlin, and his two sons, John and Coco, and two grandchildren. May he rest in peace, a great man from Reseda.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you. Mr. President, as I mentioned last Friday, Betty Lou Young passed away, actually on Thursday, when we heard about it. And so this is the official adjourning motion for Betty Lou Young. She was born May 18, 1919, in Minneapolis, Minnesota. She was brought to California as an infant by her mother, and she really considered herself a native. Her family took frequent trips to Santa Monica and the Pacific Palisades, where her curiosity about the wooded canyons was born. She went on to write books about the history of the Pacific Palisades and can, and campaigned for open spaces such as the Santa Monica Mountains, she got involved with Marvin Browdy on that and played a role. In 1940, Young earned her undergraduate degree from UCLA, where she was a member of the Phi Beta Kappa. She then attended Smith College, where she earned her master's degree in psychiatric social work in 1942. That year, she married Thomas Young, a doctor, who became a pathologist at St. John's Health Center in Santa Monica. Young's and their three children moved to Rusta Canyon in 1954, where Betty would live the rest of her life. She took daily walks, gave talks about the area's history, and volunteered at polling places each election day. Betty Lou Young played an active role as a conservationist, she fought to protect the Eucalyptus Grove in the Rusta Canyon Park, and protect, and protect the Santa Monica Mountains during the 60s, when city planners revealed plans for commercial and residential development. Young's first book, Rusta Canyon and the Story of the Uplifters, was published in 1975. In this work, she states, "People have come here from the earliest days to find refuge, to act out a charade of living out a dream." Her other works included the Los Angeles Athletic Club, the Pacific Palisades where mountains meet the sea, and the Santa Monica Canyon, a walk through history. In 1975, she founded Casavilla Press, which continues to publish titles by Young and her son Randy Young. The love Young held in the Pacific Palisades and the Rusta Canyon, the Santa Monica Canyon, where she lived for half a century, shone through her prose. Betty died at age 91 on Thursday, at Ronald Reagan UCLA Medical Center after short illness. She survived by her son and two daughters. A public memorial is planned for later this year in the Los Leones Canyon. And I might say that, um, when you walk through Rusta Canyon and feel those ancient trees, and you can think of her, because she really took the history of that area there and gave us all a real treasure to read it, and then her histories on the Pacific Palisades are well-known by everybody. Uh, may she rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Can I second that? Mr. Rosenthal. It'd be an honor to have you, Mr. Labons.
Mr. Reese? Okay, Mr. Labons?
Yeah, I'd like to adjourn in memory of James Watson. Mr. Watson, is retired city employee, was a photographer for the Los Angeles Police Department for many, many years. He retired in Oregon, he had two children, Mary and James, uh, he was 90-plus years old, he was our scout master troop 527, and he always was there for kids, always was there to help out, he was a wonderful guy, and I just passed his home over the weekend, and I thought about him. And in today, going through my mail, the last piece of email was an email from his daughter, Mary, to say that his father died. He lived a good life, he was a great city employer, a great scout master, and a great human being, I ask you to adjourn in memory of Jim Watson.
Thank you. Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to adjourn in memory of architect Stephen Canner, who passed away last Friday at the age of 54. He was a great and important architect who shaped the landscape of Westwood and much of the rest of our city with his professional work and civic engagement. Steve was a longtime member of the Westwood Village Community, and in 1988, Steve was appointed by the city council as a founding member of the Westwood Community Design Review Board, on which he served for six years, the last three as chair. He and his fellow founding DRB members set very high design and architectural standards for Westwood. He was also a founding board member of the Westwood Village Community Alliance, which was the former Westwood bid. Steve spoke often of the strong foundation of the village and his belief that much of the original charm of Westwood Village could be brought back. To make these beliefs real, Steve was hired by numerous village property owners to restore many original village buildings. Steve has left behind a very significant legacy in Westwood Village, more than a dozen projects, that leaves an indelible imprint upon the built environment in the village as one of his many enduring legacies. Steve's work won a many accolades and awards, including the LA Conservancy Historic Preservation Award in 2002, and honors from the LA Business Council for Best Renovated Retail Project that same year. He was also honored as a fellow of the American Institute of Architects, and served as president of the AIA Southern California Chapter. Among his many civic involvements and personal passions, he was the co-founder and chair of the Architecture Plus Design Museum in LA, which just celebrated the opening of its first permanent location on Wiltshire Boulevard in the Miracle Mile this past April. Steve was survived by his wife Cynthia, his daughters Carolyn and Charlotte, his sister Catherine, and his mother Judith, and he'll be missed.
Thank you very much. If there are no other adjourning motions, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? It will next be in session tomorrow, uh, that'll be on the 7th of July, Wednesday at 10 a.m. here in the council chambers. Have a good day, and this meeting of the LA City Council is adjourned.